To the Irving City Council Workshop for Thursday, the 27th. It's truly a pleasure to have each and every one of you with us today. The first item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Sinead, do we have residents who would like to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, well then, the next item on the agenda is the citizens' operation update.
Mayor Council, we have two presentations. First of all, we do have a video, a smart solution, Irving's Innovation Grants Program video. And I'm looking to see, Fernando, are you going to be able to pull that up?
We really like to fix problems.
Cody Cash works with the city's municipal drainage team.
This is kind of a cool solution.
The solution: a smart sponge.
Just looks like little pillows.
Little pillows, featuring a proprietary material that the private sector discovered could help clean up oil spills.
They figured out, hey, we can use the same material, and we can put some different coatings on it. This one has an antimicrobial coating.
So as water travels here in Dry Branch Creek, bacteria that flow through this cage and encounter the smart sponge are destroyed by that antimicrobial coating.
We're going to take bacteria samples both below and upstream of the smart sponge. And so theoretically, we would expect downstream, a lower value.
That's the goal.
It is a pilot project.
Funding for the sponges came from the city's Innovation Grants Program, which empowers employees to come up with creative new ideas to become more efficient and better serve the city.
One of the best programs that the city offers. It's really cool to have an opportunity to say, hey, I've got a process improvement.
All city of Irving employees are encouraged to pitch their innovative idea for a grant of up to $25,000.
The small investment can have a big outcome. Just an opportunity to be on the cutting edge is really neat.
A unique program to keep innovation flowing in Irving.
Mayor Council, as you heard, this is part of a program that we've had in the city for several years now. It's a way to encourage our employees to be as innovative as they can. They have a lot of great ideas and a lot of great solutions. A number of times, that takes some dollars to be able to implement. So we've been setting dollars aside for a number of years to help those employees fund their innovative ideas. So they come forward with their ideas, they pitch their ideas to a committee, the committee then chooses and sources those funds. And usually, we're budgeting about $25,000. We usually like two or three or four of the ideas, and we can generally find some extra cash to be able to fund a number of those programs as well. So I believe we're over $300,000 to date that we've been able to fund our employees' innovative solutions. And you can see one of them up there. Cody is one of our frequent flyers. He's up there each and every year with some great idea over in our CIP team. CIP team, I think, is winning the awards right now for most of the grand awards, but those have been spread across a number of departments across the city. So just want to say thanks to our IPO office and for Brett and our finance team and for all of our directors and our employees that are part of this process, and it's been very successful. And as you can see, a number of them really do help impact the community, especially in this case, from the environmental perspective. Any questions on the Innovation Grants Program?
Questions?
All right. And then we have our safety first, because safety lasts.
Safety is a word that is widely spoken, yet rarely enacted. Operating safely is not just a responsibility of a few people or the designated safety champions, but it's something that each and every person should work diligently to make happen. When shortcuts to safety occur or when safety is completely ignored, injuries and accidents happen. Several years ago, while working in a school district, I encountered a school nurse who injured herself. This nurse, while preparing for a parent event at the very beginning of the school year, needed to post something above the door to the school clinic. The step ladder was just around 50 feet away. It would have taken her less than two minutes to grab the ladder and set it up. Instead, she grabbed a chair that was closer, something that many of us have done even while at home. While she stood on the chair, she lost her balance and fell to the floor, and she suffered a broken wrist and needed surgery to repair it. About a year after her accident, she sat down with me and shared some effects the surgery had on her. While she was thankful for us taking care of her, she mentioned that we, as her employer, should not have had to do this. She said it was her own fault that she hurt herself. She shared, though, that her life had changed. She loved to quilt, and her ability to use scissors would never return. But what she shared next was what impacted me the most. She shared that due to her careless accident, she was not able to hold her grandkids. It's something that she could not get back, and she lost that special time that a grandparent is afforded when a grandchild is born. She urged me to share her story so that others realize that avoiding safety has consequences that we will never be able to get back. During the month of March, we want to encourage every single employee to make safety a priority. We want each employee to return home safely at the end of each day. Our model for this month is safety first, because safety lasts. Each of us practicing safety each and every day, every time, will allow you to return home to your family. I hope I don't ever have to hear again from someone that they cannot hold their child or their grandchild because of a preventable accident. If you have any questions about safety, please contact your department's safety champion or a member of the risk management team. We are here to support you and the important work you do for the residents and community members here within the city of Irving.
Mayor Council, safety is always our top priority for all of our employees and for all of our residents. And as we really focus in on this next month to ensure that we do all that we can to keep our employees safe, we're going to be showing this video and having continued conversations with our employees to ensure that when they go out there, they're not only watching out for themselves, but they're watching out for each other as well. So thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is if I could get Mr. Lopez and Mr. Rodriguez to join me up for a proclamation. There we go. We have a proclamation for Public Risk Management Awareness Day. Whereas within the city of Irving, there exist inherent risks to which all public entities are exposed, and whereas the public risk management professionals within the city implement frameworks to reduce, transfer, accept, and mitigate risk, which allows the city to maintain a fiscally stable responsibility, decrease liabilities, reduce reputational risks while improving safety, and whereas using risk control framework allows these professionals to scan the environmental environment for risks and identify, analyze, formulate plans to control financial risk, and administer the risk management program. And whereas it is important to recognize and bring awareness to public risk management and control of these professionals so that together, we can build a safer future for our city. Now therefore, I, Rick Stouffer, mayor of the city of Irving, and the Irving City Council, to hereby proclaim Risk Management Awareness Day for March 1, 2025. Thank you all for what you do. Also, I have something here that was slipped into my pocket that I need to talk about. We have an employee who has been with us for 15 years. And unfortunately, I was fortunate to be on the council when we appointed this individual. Sinead, you want to come up and join me? Sinead is our city secretary, and this is a privilege for me to give her a pen for her 15 years of service within our community. Sinead takes everything she does very seriously. She is probably the best there is when it comes to elections. Her knowledge is unbelievable. Her commitment to the work that we do day in day and the records that we keep, the open records that are asked for, she is in charge of all those types of things. And more than anything else, she's in charge of all of us. And if you can imagine being in charge of eight people and myself being one of those eight, that's a full-time project within itself. So Sinead, congratulations on your years of service, and thank you so much for all you do for all of us.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item on our agenda, we'll go ahead and pull up item number four. I have some representatives here from the DART, Gary Slagel along with Nadine Lee. Also joining us is Mark Enick and Doug Herbachek. And Gary, if you had something you'd like to present? Are you just right there at the?
So for the last four months or so, as a result of a resolution that was prepared and submitted to us by six of the member cities of DART, we have been going around speaking with those member cities to really understand where we need to go, what we need to do to improve DART for the region. And we feel that it's important for us as an organization to listen. We're fortunate enough to have Mayor Stouffer as a DART board member, and so he's been following some of this activity as we move forward. But what we've done is, starting in October, late October, then through November, December, we circulated through our 13 cities. We visited our 13 cities, Mark Enick, myself, and Nadine Lee, along with the board member that represented that particular city. And our goal was just to talk to the organization, to talk to the mayor and the city manager about what it is they would like to see us do and what kind of plans we could put in place. So we've been doing that, and I'm going to give you... And so that was our first pass-through. The second pass-through, the cities, which happened in, started in late December and went through, part of, most of January, was to go back to the city, make sure we understood what we heard, test that, get more input. And then we did a third round of that, and now we're on our fourth round, talking to the full city councils. And we've gone through four or five of those city councils at this point in time, and we'll finish those up by the end of March. But basically, during the discussion with the cities, we also brought back to the board on what we've heard. And in some cases, we've heard from the cities that, you know, we'd really like to have more dollars to spend on our own, more discretionary funding. And basically, the resolution that came out of the six cities, including Irving, were at 25%, basically, an amount that would go back to the cities for use by that city. We tested that... Let me do a clicker here. There we go. We tested that on not only our board, but also on the other cities as we've made these rounds. Generally, the cities have said, if you're going to give money back to one city, you need to give money back to all cities, and that makes sense. The other thing we heard is we'd really rather have these improvements that tie together in the way the city already has transit, make the improvements, we need to supplement and complement what we have. and complement what we have. So, we brought that back to the board in January, and we had a consensus in a couple of workshops on the 8th and 10th of January. We tried to get a consensus from the board as to where we were. We'd already approved a resolution that said the board was in support of full funding, which happened mid-year. But this was to get into a little bit more detail about what we've heard and get some direction from the board. So, the direction, and I will say this is a consensus, it was not a posted, we took a vote thing, we just, you know, had a lot of discussion and concluded that where the majority of the board was, is we should be providing, because we're a transportation authority, we should work with the cities, provide more service, different service, a combination of services, but had no problem with working with the cities also on economic development. We'll talk a little bit about the economic development piece as well. But from a service perspective, it was generally a common theme, we would like to have circulators that are scheduled to take people from point A to point B, back and forth throughout the communities. And then secondly, a microtransit component of that, which included more go length than we have today. So we, you know, and so we took those back, and we're in the, last couple of board meetings, we've talked about the cost of doing that, doing those first two items up there, the circulator and the microtransit services. But addition to that, working with the cities on trying to improve the ridership, because ridership was also one of the things that we'd heard. A lot of the cities have, you know, they pay dollars into DART, we put buses, trains, we put things out, different vehicles out there for mobility, and maybe that's not used at the level we needed to. Now, it used to be, prior to COVID, it was a pretty strong service that we were providing. During COVID, that dropped down because so many, two things happened. People were not particularly interested in getting on a crowded train or a bus because of the possibility of what that means from a COVID perspective. And then secondly, many, you know, we started seeing people working from home. And as that, as that happened, our ridership dropped dramatically. Over the last year, the ridership is back up to about 83% of pre-COVID numbers, and more and more companies are bringing people back to work. We'll be doing the same thing at DART, where we've had work from home, now we'll be bringing people back. So that will increase our ridership as well. I think probably, though, the last bullet on here is really an important one, which is participate in economic development. And I'll compliment your city manager, who has brought forth this idea of using our sales tax, incremental growth in sales tax, as a tool for economic development. Rick has given me, Mayor Stouffer, excuse me, has given me the example many times on the fact that you collect sales tax from a new business, and we, and you give that back to them as part of the agreement that you reached for economic development. But the DART sales tax goes back to DART. And there's a, that creates a little bit of a problem, which I certainly understand. So, Monday morning, committee of the city managers, subcommittee of the city managers of the area started working with our staff to come up with what that would look like. How do we put a box around the process so that when, you know, you don't have to come asking for approval from the DART board for every time you want to do an economic development deal, that you're able to do that? And so those, that's being put together, and I think that's really important. And all the cities like this, from Glen Heights to Plano, everybody likes the idea of it, so let's do something that really works. Dallas, Dallas, in fact, would appreciate the use of that sales tax to do some economic development as well. So all cities like the idea. We also concluded that we need to better utilize our real estate. When we put DART together 42 years ago, we built huge parking lots that accommodated people. We didn't know how many people were going to ride the system, we just knew they, some people will, let's assume that we're at full capacity, and we designed parking lots that were much larger than we needed. So we'll work with any city, all of our cities, to try to leverage that asset, that real estate, that parking lot. We have done agreements now with Addison and the City of Richardson, we've done some in Dallas. And the idea here is, let's use our real estate, let's take advantage of it, and make, use those as an asset for economic development. And the last one is, we just need to collaborate more with our cities, as you folks are doing changes to your city, making design changes, making, you know, doing whatever you do as a city. And I was a mayor for a while, so I experienced a little bit of what that was like, and I think that's critical. We always need to be a partner. We collect sales tax, we need to be able to provide services and do things with our cities. The other thing, and I'll move that, move on to the next subject, the thing that we heard while talking to our cities is that we have a governance issue, and that broke down into two different ways. The group at the top are smaller cities that really don't have a board member to speak for them. They do, in that each board member represents roughly 168,000 people. So the board of, the board of 15 is put together, everybody represents roughly that number of people, and that has to be reviewed every five years, which we'll be reviewing this year. We'll have new numbers coming out of COG, and we'll look at the allocation of board seats and how those fall, and it's based on population. So, but that doesn't solve the problem for that group above, and so a couple of things that are happening there, we're looking at reallocating board seats based on, let the cities decide who they would like to pair with instead of the board deciding that. And years ago, we did it, and it worked out just fine. But for, I'll tell you, I've been on the board 13 years, I've represented Richardson, Addison, Highland Park, and University Park. And even though I talk to the park cities, they have different needs than Richardson does or Addison does. So, I would like to see the board members be selected by the cities. You do, you do a great job of that. You have Mayor Stouffer as your board member, and you have a partial additional seat, and you have, and your board, your other board member really represents Carrollton as well as Irving. So you've done a good job of doing that. There are other cases where the split board member, they don't have anyone, and so we've got to fix that. Secondly, the other issue was Dallas can control everything that happens because they have eight board members and the suburbs have seven, so therefore, we need to fix that problem. About two or three years ago, Mayor Stouffer, myself, and several of the other suburban board members did, were able to pass a supermajority vote to reduce service. In January of this year, we passed a supermajority to add service. What that does is it makes, if, and I'll say this, in the number of years I've been on the board, I have not seen Dallas really take advantage of that. But they could, and maybe they have without us really realizing what happened. But the way this supermajority works, the city of Dallas would have their seven votes plus, they would have, they would, Nadine would need to get to 10 votes in order to be able to pass something. So that, I think, helps a great deal. Now, on Tuesday of this week, some of the suburban board members, including Mayor Stouffer, brought, and they brought a proposal to us, which said, let's do that also on the budget. It didn't pass, but it didn't fail in that it has been moved out for additional study with some of the other items that we think we need to take a look at in terms of supermajority. So that is, that is still going to be on the agenda. So that's where that stands at this point, and hopefully, we will be able to move forward on that. Now, according, Senator Parker has asked us as a board to come up with an agreement with the cities on what governance should look like. And basically, what we have done is we've created an MOU which identifies the details around which I just described. And we'll have to review that with each of the cities, and as a matter of fact, when I leave here today, I'll give Mayor Stouffer a copy of what's been generated as a MOU for how we might do governance and take comments on that. And that'll be the first city that's received this, but it's basically what's in the presentation. So that's, that's a key element of what we're trying to do. What I'd like to do now, though, is, if I could, is turn this over to Nadine Lee to walk through some of the projects that we have been doing for Irving and things that we have heard that you'd like us to do moving forward. So let me turn that over to her quickly.
Thank you, Chair Slagle. I'm going to go ahead and advance a couple of slides because Chair Slagle covered the slide number four. So Chair Slagle referenced the work that we started on Monday this week, working with our city managers, a subset of our city managers, to determine some parameters for how DART can automatically participate in a TIRS or a TIF district. So, we made a lot of progress on Monday, we're really excited about it. DART is really interested in making sure that we find a way to set some parameters where the cities will have some certainty around how we can participate with our sales tax increment for some of these redevelopment zones or new development zones within each of our 13 service area cities. And so we're looking forward to bringing back to the broader city manager group on a regular basis, as well as the DART board, the progress that we're making from meeting to meeting. And we're meeting about every other week on Mondays to continue that conversation. And just so you know, we're trying to sort of get to agreement on the things that are easy to agree on, and then leaving the harder stuff that warrants more discussion for later. So we're making a lot of progress here up in the front, and we anticipate that we can get, hopefully, about, you know, 90% of the things knocked out before we get into the more detailed discussions about the how-tos. So, again, we're looking forward to coming to an agreement on that. Our goal is to bring a proposed, proposed language and deal points in ILA form to the board in May. So, we're going to have to work really quickly over the next couple of months. I mean, hopefully, we can even do it before that, but we're certainly working in earnest to do that. I want to talk a little bit about the public transportation improvement funds that we are, that we had provided to each of our 13 service area cities in fiscal year 2023. That's when we signed the ILAs with each of our service area cities. In Irving specifically, 12 and a half million of your 25 million is being used or saved, set aside for the deferred Orange Line Station, that's the Loop 12 Station or the stadium, the old Cowboys Stadium site. And we're holding that, that, those resources right now in anticipation of getting to construction on that particular station. We are actually working on preliminary engineering right now, and so looking forward to what that concept looks like in the future. We also allocated, well, you allocated 12 and a half million to street overlay, panel and sidewalk replacement and rebuild. That project, the project, the funding, or the project has been completed, and the funding has been fully drawn down, which is great. So congratulations on that. We do encourage our cities to draw down those funds as quickly as possible so that you can get them put to work for your city. And so that's, that's the PTI funds. The DART board did agree to extend the deadlines on the PTI funds use. It doesn't really affect Irving, per se, because we had already agreed to set aside those funds for the Loop 12 Station, 12 Station, and so it's not subject to the same deadlines that are stipulated in the, in the ILA. So there's a whole bunch of things listed on this slide that I know you can read on your own. I do want to touch on some recent service changes that we made last June. We added Route 225 that links the Trinity Railway Express to Northlake College. We also did some realignments on Route 231, just to address the transportation needs in that area. We also added in June of 2024, the new Passport Park and Bear Creek GoLink Zone, which is an additional zone that we thought was going to be useful for the residents of Irving. And then last September, across the system, we increased the weekend service to 20-minute headways on all of our light rail lines. And so we are continuing to work with your staff, Mr. Hillman, to determine what other transportation needs, what other service needs you all have, in hopes that we can continue to improve the services for the city of Irving. And I think that's all I have. I don't know if, Gary, you wanted to close out, or if Mark wanted to? Thank you.
Hi. Most of you don't know me, I'm Mark Enick, I'm a board member, having been there 27 years. I've got some perspective on things. I've been in some of the meetings with your mayor and city manager, former mayor of Rowlett, and also familiar with what you're up to, which is husbanding your resources and stewarding your funds. First of all, I want to make sure that, I want to talk about the elephant in the room. And the elephant in the room is not necessarily these projects, but that somehow DART is Dallas-centric and not giving sufficient attention to the suburbs' needs. And we had a vote two nights ago that I know upset your mayor, and we shared some discussions about that, having to do with whether or not there'd be a two-thirds majority vote necessary to pass a budget. I did not vote for that. I'm a suburb, I represent Rowlett, Glen Heights, and Garland. And the reason I didn't do so is because I want it to pass. And that night, my judgment was it wouldn't. And I know what politics takes sometimes, and it takes some more work before you can get what you need in a vote. But more importantly, as a suburb, in either another year or another six years, depending on the census, I believe the suburbs will have a majority. And Dallas has had the ability to pass a budget by majority for the last 40 years. Now, if the suburbs are going to have that majority in six years, I'm not sure I want to change that position. But nevertheless, as the administrative chair of DART, I'm interested in changing bylaws, and I have a couple of issues, and I'd like to discuss with you ideas. On the budgetary issue, I went back and checked the last 10 years voting on budgets at DART. There are 150 total votes available, 15 board members each year times 10, and the average vote has been 13.4 to 1. The .4 is because of absentees. So every budget, not specifically, but on average of every budget, has been passed by a supermajority anyway. Now, what can we do structurally, because I believe in the one man, one woman, one vote? I don't want to dilute any voters by way we are represented on the DART board, I just don't think that's a democratic way to do it. But I also understand that the suburbs are feeling, one way or another, right or wrong, doesn't matter, the perception is that we're bus-focused and therefore necessarily Dallas-focused. Well, I've got an idea to try to change that. I shared this with your mayor earlier, and he, you know, I come up with half-baked ideas sometimes, and I'm not sure this one is half-baked yet. But this is my idea, that, and I've not talked to the DART board about it, we'll discuss this tomorrow, I think we'll have some very good discussions on this. Let's assume that on a go-forward basis, DART, think of a pie chart. In that pie chart, you have a section down here to pay debt service. That's fixed, you got to pay the debt service off, you got to service your debt, you got contracts with your bondholders. The other two-thirds or thereabouts of it, there's a line somewhere, and I don't know where that is. Part of it is regional, the dollars that we all contribute for the regional system, the rail system, the connections, the last mile, TRE, whatever it might be, are the regional. And the other is called local. And that local sum, whatever that is, is available to the cities to decide how they want to handle transportation in their towns. No longer would it be, if it ever was, DART saying, you know, Irving, what you need is four buses over here and five buses over here and stuff like that. Instead, on an annual or probably biannual basis, because you'd have to do this planning, Irving would say, this is what we want. This is how we want our dollars spent. So no longer would it be, okay, DART has decided to spend X million dollars in your town on our projects, and now we'll talk to you about maybe spending more of the extras. No, it wouldn't be like that. It would be, Irving would decide how it wants to spend those dollars consistent with 452. And structurally, in the bylaws, which I chair that committee, structurally in the bylaws, that would be set up on a future basis. So cities would know that a certain portion of those local funds would come back to them based on a revenue basis, this is on expense basis, how much you put in. And you could count on it from year to year. I've got streets, I've got whatever it might be, I've got TIRS, I've got whatever it might be. You no longer have to worry about whether or not it's Dallas-centric and bus-focus-centric because we have a portion dedicated to local operations. Then, I'm going to float that tomorrow. I hope it works, I don't know. I wanted to explain to you why I voted the way I did last night, and I hope that that changes, but hopefully- changes. But hopefully, beyond that, a structural change to the way we do things to dedicate funds in the future for primarily local use that you all would decide in your own city. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Mayor, we're finished unless there are questions.
Okay. I also wanted to recognize Doug Erbaczek. Doug is the other partner that we have with Carrollton. The challenge you run into a lot of times is that there are split people. I have always had a relationship with Doug and the mayor of, and if their mayor had a different position or their council had a different position than we did, I always felt it was important for Doug to, so Doug, if you want to just say a few things or come up, I'd appreciate it. Because I believe that one of the challenges we have is that the cities do not have the ability to voice. You can have one person stand up and say, well, these two cities I represent believe this, and this is what I believe, and these two cities believe something different. You're always going to be more passionate for the cities that agree with where you agree. So I've always felt that if Doug City had a different position, that he was entitled to give that rather than my position.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And my name is Doug Erbaczek, and I am a former city councilman in the city of Carrollton, and I have the honor of representing my hometown of Carrollton as well as everyone here in Irving. And first of all, I want to thank Mayor Stouffer for his steadfast leadership as we worked through this, and in particular, Chris Hillman. It's been a pleasure working with them and all of you. And Bradla McAsia, thank you for your leadership at RTC. We certainly appreciate it. But yeah, it's an interesting time at the agency. I can tell you, there are some differences of opinions, and we continue to work through those. As, I'm sure you're aware, there has been some legislation filed, and we will continue to work here locally to solve these issues. Mayor, I'll let you speak on your side, but I think the frustrating piece for us is these resolutions were passed eight or nine months ago, in some cases, and we have taken two votes. There has been no action on behalf of the agency. We took a vote, it was mentioned a vote in January was taken for supermajority to add service, and we had a vote Tuesday night. And I think it's really important, as Chair Sligle pointed out, that that was added to the agenda at the request of myself, Mayor Stouffer, and Paul Wageman. I think what the member cities are looking for is action. I think what the member cities are looking for is change. And I look forward to working with Mayor Stouffer and Chris Hillman as we move forward and continue to work on addressing these issues and changing the way things have been done for the last 41 years.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate the insight and the information. Kyle?
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't believe in, I believe in term limits, and when I hear somebody tell me it's one way or the other, but has there been any discussion at DART about looking to put in term limits to maybe change the makeup of the soup there to see if things can't get moved on and get some different set of eyes looking at some things?
We have had that conversation. That was one of the things we talked about. At the time, it was basically floated, I think, basically to address two or three of us that have been there for a long time. Everyone knows that I've got less, about a year left on this council, and with that time, I probably will not be on the DART board either, if not sooner. Because I agree with you that we need to have a new, fresh set of eyes. I also believe that you need people who are in positions that can make decisions for their city rather than people who are told what decisions are. As we had this vote last week, I had three of the DART board members come to me and say, we've been instructed by our council not to support this. So you can say they control them or they don't control them.
Let me also, if I might add, one of the things we're putting in here, which I didn't touch on, is we're encouraging the cities to determine how they want to do term limits. Do they want to rotate? So let's say we had a board member that served three cities. You want to come up with a two-year term. All of that can be left up to the cities without having to make any changes in our rules. Now, we might want to make some overall change and set a limit of so many years because we have, you know, we still may want to do that. But I think that all is part of our governance discussion that we're trying to have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. And Gary and Mark, Nadine and Doug, thank you so much for being here. We definitely appreciate the update from DART. Just on the economic development piece, on the TIRS and the TIF, we've been working on that for a number of months. I really appreciate, I thought it was a very good meeting on Monday. I appreciate Nadine and her team. They set up a very good structure on how those conversations can move forward. Nadine, you and I talked about that beginning last October. In fact, Dennis, I was sitting near your church, ready, parking lot, ready to go into one of your meetings that evening for a community event, and I'm outside talking with Nadine on how we can maybe look at this TIRS or economic development piece. I think we've had some great conversations. I really appreciate DART's willingness to look at being a partner with the cities in economic development. As you know, the non-member cities of DART definitely have an economic development advantage over us. They can take their one cent, Frisco is a great example, and literally, at times, just buy deals. That puts all of us as member cities at a disadvantage. And having DART be a partner with us, as we've seen throughout the years in some of our TIRS and TIF districts, whether it's the school district, the community college districts, whoever it might be, having those partners as well contribute. So I think that it's going to be a very viable tool. I think it's going to be one that will be very helpful for all member cities. And the structure that we're looking at to have it be simple, broad-based, and equitable across all member cities and predictable for DART and its revenue, I think is going to be very important. So just again, thank you very much for, I think, a great conversation kicking off and looking forward to those additional conversations. Also, really appreciate the focus on microtransits and allowing our residents to get to where they need to get to in the most convenient and efficient way possible. The GoLink Zones, we know what we've been looking at. We've talked a little bit about expanding that. We've had some other conversations as well. I think that's key because for mass transit for any city, whether it's Irving or any other member city of DART or any other city here in the metroplex, the one thing that we want to do is ensure that if we're providing mass transit solutions, it's what works for our residents and what they need at this time. And having those abilities to modify and change service models that can adjust to the different times that we have, that's what we really need to be looking at, and what are those creative solutions? I think GoLink is a good way to go, and I think expanding that would be an option that would be very much under consideration as we look into that. You have to have the intra and the inter services between all member cities. And Mark, I think you said it, there's a core there that you want to have interregional connection. But most important for our residents, it's not just being able to get to the airport. It's not being able to get to downtown Dallas if they need to work in Dallas, although we have more Dallas residents coming to work in our city than in Las Cuenas, and I think we have going into downtown Dallas. But most importantly is allowing our residents to get around our city in a convenient and efficient way possible. That is really the core. That's what our residency, that's that touch point. As we continue to work on that, I think we're going to have some good conversations. Thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, I think there are probably too many thank yous to go around, but definitely thank you to the mayor. And, you know, we're in this very challenging times of, like you said, governance and financing, and then the changing nature of transit, you know? And I think we've got a long agenda today, so I don't want to talk too much longer. But I think the challenge is trying to put all that together, and I know you've been working hard, Gary, and getting around, or Chairman Sligle. So we really appreciate that, and I think, you know, I don't know that it gets any easier necessarily, but I think working through those issues, because bottom line is, we just, here at least, my feeling, and I think most council members, we want kind of bang for the buck with our transit and getting efficient services and making sure everything's moving. And going forward in the future, who knows? I keep hearing about potentially driverless cars and tracks that will make things faster. As technology progresses, the model changes. And so, you know, that all, and that can reduce the need for concrete and roads and different variety of things that are also very costly. So look forward to try to continue to keep working through everything.
Al? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Nadine, thank you for always coming and facing us, so to speak, and to bring your team. You know, I remember my times at DOT many years ago, and there is no mass transit that's not subsidized, one way or another, whether we like it or not. I think what I'd like you to think about, and I want to thank the mayor for taking all the years that he's been on the board and working with you to try to see what kind of things we can get done, but we're going to be in the next three to five years, major changes in our area here. And you know what I'm talking about. And that's not just going to be us, it's going to be probably Fort Worth, Irving, Dallas. And so I guess if I can say anything, I think I'd like to thank that you all are forward planning and forward planning with us for those changes. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. And let me just say, we, you know, we want to resolve the issues we have locally. We'd rather not have to go let somebody in Austin do that for us. So we're here because we care about all of our cities, and we're here because we want to work with you. So tune into the work session we have tomorrow if you've got time. Hopefully, we'll make some progress on some of these issues and be able to deliver a solution that everybody's happy with. Thank you.
No further questions? We'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Okay, the next item is the amendments to the PUD 6 for high-intensity, the mixed-use district.
Philip Sanders, Assistant City Manager. I'm here to present some proposed amendments to PUD 6. A very small portion of PUD 6, Track A, Sectors 1 and 2, to create a high-intensity mixed-use district on that property. Just by way of background, the area that we know of PUD 6 today was really identified about 10 years ago as the city was working through the creation of a comprehensive plan. It was about 1,000 acres around the former Texas Stadium site. There were three goals that were identified as they looked at the opportunities for redevelopment, really to provide zoning clarity and create a catalyst for future redevelopment, considering the size of the area, its location in the metroplex, and the opportunities it presented. There was some direction given at the time to create a planned unit development over that area that we now know as PUD 6 today. The vision of PUD 6 as identified in the document was really to make full use of the site. Previously, it had a lot of heavier industrial type of uses, and as they looked at the site, it was clear that there was an opportunity for something far more significant and impactful for the city's future. It envisioned a mixed-use development that would have corporate headquarters, offices, residential, retail, a variety of uses in a very urban environment. And then also, the vision was to allow cities to facilitate development, working with developers on opportunities, and provide clarity to developers as they go and look at opportunities at that site. So PUD 6 was developed and created and adopted. It is divided into eight tracks, Tracks A through H. Tracks A, D, F, and G were all identified for transit-oriented development. Kind of deferred to the standards that existed in the zoning ordinance for transit-oriented development. Tracks B and C were identified as Flex Work, which is really kind of a heavier industrial type of use, similar to what is already adjacent on those properties. Track D was considered Mixed Use Village. It's largely developed today. It has a mix of a couple different residential products, multifamily and single-family. Track G was rezoned out of PUD 6 last year. And then Track H is exclusively open space. It's beyond the levee, it's floodplain, and is not developable. The primary landowners are, of course, the city. We own Track D, which is the former Texas Stadium site. Village Walk Realty 2 owns most of Track A, Sectors 1 and 2, which are the darker shades of pink. There is another property owner, FedEx, that owns some property on Track A as well. And then University of Dallas owns Tracks F and G. So we had looked at the PUD 6 ordinance starting in 2023. We asked our planning staff to review that. They identified some areas of improvement. We presented some recommendations to the city council at that time to improve and clarify the regulatory structure of PUD 6. And based on council's direction at the time, we began meeting with property owners, the major property owners in the PUD, to inform them of what we were trying to do, understand what their aspirations and needs for development were. During the course of those conversations, we spoke with Village Walk 2, which had recently acquired the property there in Track A, and in the course of those conversations, identified the possibility of a unique and significant development opportunity that could occur on that property. So we paused our work in revamping PUD 6 in order to better understand the opportunities and needs of Village Walk 2 and how those might be incorporated into the work that we were already undertaking relative to the regulatory structure of PUD 6. So we had a number of meetings over the course of probably the last five months. I think in the summer of 2024, our planning staff developed some conceptual ideas about what those amendments could look like specifically as it relates to Track A. The development of the ordinance that you have before you today has been an iterative process that has occurred over the last five months. I want to credit Jocelyn Murphy, who kind of created the general concept that we have, and then, of course, working with our legal team, Carolyn and Janet, refining that over the course of a number of months to what we're presenting today. It is, first, a continuation of the city's efforts that we started back in October 2023. But it also addresses regulatory issues that were identified as we considered the opportunities that Village Walk 2 had presented and how those might fit in, and what changes we would need to make in order to maximize the opportunities that are possible on that site, including allowing for greater flexibility of uses, specifically a destination resort concept as a permitted use, which I'll talk about here in a few slides. Allowing for higher-density development for non-residential uses was an important consideration. And then allowing phasing of the development that would not require residential components. The current PUD requires residential components on this track as you develop, and that may not be ideal. It clarifies the permitted uses, and again, it maximizes the opportunity for a transformational development, which is really what the city, I think, envisioned on that property. And it also establishes a process and a requirement for development standards that would promote quality on that track. We know that zoning is owner-agnostic, and I think it was very important for the city staff as we reviewed this to make sure that the city's interests and the vision of PUD 6 was protected regardless of who the owner is and regardless of what ultimately may be developed, that there is a regulatory structure in place that would ensure equality opportunity. The zoning that you have before you is only applicable to Track A, Sectors 1 and 2. That's the area highlighted in pink within the PUD. Village Walk Realty is the owner of, I think, 99.9% of that. There's a little piece that's owned by Irving Flood Control 1, which is really the levee, the parallel levees that bisect the tract. I think the DART tract is listed as a separate tract around the perimeter, and there's a vestige of some property that the city acquired when the Signature Bridge was built just on the other side of 114. So there are really two proposed amendments in your package. The first one, and by far, probably the most important one, is the creation of the High Density Mixed Use Zoning District for PUD 6. It's a fairly simple ordinance. It is, its purpose and intent is to create an identical mixed-use area that encourages development that contain a concentration of mixed uses, something that promotes density and maximizes the value and the location of that property within PUD 6. That's the general purpose of the High Intensity Mixed Use District. It establishes permitted uses. It establishes a process for creating development standards, which is an important function, and then establishes an administrative process for review of regulating plans as the property develops. an administrative process for review of regulating plans as the property develops. The second ordinance is amendments to the PUD 6 Exhibit B document, which assigns to Tract A, Sectors 1 and 2, the high-end-density mixed-use zoning requirements. So, it's kind of a two-step process. We create the district, and then we assign that district to Tract A, Sectors 1 and 2. I want to walk through the ordinance with you. It's, again, very simple. I think paragraph A is the purpose and intent. Paragraph B identifies the permitted uses. And I have in this chart a comparison between what's in the current entitlement, the PUD 6 as it exists today, versus what we're proposing for the High Intensity Mixed Use District. As we mentioned earlier, the existing entitlement defers to the Transit-Oriented Mixed Use zoning district, which really doesn't re-- excuse me, can I get a water? The TOD district doesn't enumerate a bunch of permitted uses. It basically says, it has an idea. It says a mix of commercial and residential uses, but the specific uses that are authorized are listed in a reg, a TOD general plan, which must be approved by the city council. So, you're really on a case-by-case basis approving the permitted uses in a TOD district. Whereas in the proposed High Intensity Mixed Use District, we have enumerated a number of specifically permitted uses. There's three of them that have an asterisk beside them. Those are new uses that are defined in the ordinance itself: arena, casino gaming, only within a destination resort, and then destination resort itself is a defined term. And those are in paragraph G. We'll talk about that here in just a minute. We also identify prohibited uses, things that, as we reviewed what the vision is for PUD 6, how it would fit together, would not be consistent with what we hope to develop and hope to see developed on that site. We talk about other uses. There may be temporary uses that the develop, that might present themselves from time to time. There's already a process in our zoning ordinance for council to consider temporary uses. We defer to that section. We also understand that, as the world changes, there are other uses that are not specifically identified as permitted, but not prohibited either. You won't believe, this happened to me at my daughter's wedding. As the officiator was actually pronouncing the vows, I could not keep from coughing. I had to turn to him, and I said, "Look, give me five minutes." I had to go out and get something to help. But, so on those unidentified uses, we create a process where we can use the conditional use permit-- Thank you, Theresa, you're my savior-- --to consider those on a case-by-case basis, because we understand that there may be good ideas that we just simply haven't identified, but it allows the city council an opportunity to look at those on a case-by-case basis and say, "Yeah, that works here," or "No, it doesn't." Alcohol sales would be persistent with our existing rules on the sale of alcoholic beverages. I've got, thank you, I've got two bottles of water and a piece of candy here. Hopefully, one of these will work. So, let's go to paragraph G, which is the definitions. There's three definitions in there. I want to focus in on destination resort. That's probably the most substantive and important definition in there. "The destination resort was one of these development concepts that was identified by the current owner as a possibility in the future. There's no specific development proposal sitting out there pending, simply a discussion that this is something that could happen on this property in the future. We know that there's been legislation filed the last two legislative sessions regarding destination resorts in Texas that could include an element of gaming. And so, as we look at that opportunity, we wanted to say, how would we define that? If that were to happen here, how would that be defined?" So, we have defined it as a mixed use with very specific elements that must be included. First of all, it has to have hotel rooms, at least 1,750 hotel rooms. I think our Westin has 350. So, by way of comparison in size, you can see 1,750 is a pretty large hotel complex, spools, spas, restaurants, retail stores, convention and exhibition, meeting facilities, a minimum of a half a million square feet. And that's probably the element that sets it apart from other destination resorts that you might see around the country that simply have maybe entertainment space and maybe some gaming rooms. The inclusion and the requirement to include exhibition space, convention space, makes this unique. And then an arena with a minimum of 15,000 square feet, or an indoor theater with a minimum of 4,000, 4,000 seats. A destination resort may include casino gaming, if ultimately that is authorized by the constitution and laws of the state of Texas. It's not authorized today. It's been a topic of conversation at the state. In the event that it passes through the legislature, it's approved by the voters of the state of Texas, then it would be an authorized use within and only within a destination resort that has to have all the elements above. Okay? Any authorization of casino gaming would also include pretty strict regulatory structures at the state level, probably a gaming commission that would regulate significantly how that industry operates. It's probably one of the most heavily regulated industries in the United States today. The gross square footage of this resort concept, if you have the gaming component, would have to be at least 4 million square feet. That's a substantial development. Think about it in terms of Pioneer Natural Resources building, the old headquarter campus, that's just a little over a million square feet. So, at least four of those, all within one large resort with retail, restaurants, entertainment, a variety of different opportunities. It could be constructed within a single structure. More likely, it's going to be a series of interconnected structures that would be built. So, that's how a destination resort, if it was allowed, that's the, that's the floor. That's the minimum of what it would have to have. Development standards. That's kind of the, the internal organs of a zoning ordinance. The uses are the skeletal structure, if I can use that, that, that analogy. Development standards are important. Right now, in the existing entitlement, we defer to the TOD development standards, which are old. We've had conversations about TODs in the past, and I think what we would look for is something a little bit different than just referring to our TOD development standards. As we began this conversation, looking at this ordinance, we tried to really get in and say, "Okay, let's, let's flesh out all those development standards." That's going to take some time. So, what we have proposed in this ordinance is a process whereby no development can occur on the property until those development standards are created, reviewed, and approved by the city council. They'll cover a wide range of different types of things. I've listed a few of those there. There are the types of things that you would typically see in a zoning ordinance, but even more detailed. What we're hoping to achieve is something more akin to a form-based development standard, which really pays more attention to how buildings are situated on the, on property, location of parking, the street scape, kind of that feeling that you get when you're walking in an urban environment, and the types of things that really people appreciate about an urban environment would be mandated through those development standards. Again, this is kind of a, a process whereby the council would have the ability to approve those before any development on the property occurs. Once those development standards are approved by the city council, there would be another administrative process for submitting what are being termed regulating plans. Right now, in the PUD, development plans are submitted for approval, but they're approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, unless they're requesting a variance of some kind that would warrant approval by the city council. And even then, some variances can be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission per our own existing rules for PUDs. In this proposal, all regulating plans would be approved by the city council. There would be a number of different types of data points that would have to be provided in a regulating plan: how the, how the property is going to be laid out, the streets, access to highways, utilities, drainage. All of those things would have to be submitted as part of that regulating plan, reviewed internally, ultimately presented to the city council for final approval. So, there's safeguards in this ordinance, not in, not only in terms of quality and the development standards, but ultimately, the city council is going to approve those. But any development plan or regulating plan that's ultimately submitted, the council also has to review and approve as well. So, that's the big ordinance, and it's, I say big, it's actually a pretty small ordinance, but it's important. The other piece that would have to accompany this is actually amending the PUD 6 Exhibit B document to reflect that we're removing the TOD standards, not referencing them for purposes of Tract A only. Everything else stays the same, and instead referencing the High Intensity Mixed Use District standards for that property. While we're in there doing surgery on the PUD 6 document, take out references to Exhibit G, which, Tract G, which has already been removed, revise and update some of the sections to refer to our Unified Development Code instead of other outdated sections of the code, which have been previously amended, revise the total acreage and just make other miscellaneous typographical corrections, essentially making sure that, instead of redoing the entire PUD for all of the tracks, just redoing the PUD for this property alone and making sure that all the loose ends are tied off and addressed so that it's clear that development of Tract A, Sectors 1 and 2, is the High Intensity Mixed Use requirements, not anything else. So, those are the two documents you have in your packet. So, in summary, this is the overview and comparison, the existing PUD 6 planning projections, referred to Transit-Oriented Mixed Use. What we're proposing is the High Intensity Mixed Use District. The maximum number of residential units that was contemplated in the PUD for this property, the 3,750, would remain. We're not proposing to increase those at all. Those would be capped at 3,750. Maximum residential square footage, we took out. It's better to refer to number of maximum units and let unit count be the governing factor that, rather than square feet. And then we also removed non-residential square footage caps, because what we're hoping to achieve is much more dense than what the current PUD would allow. I call my daughter Abby and tell her it happened again. She'll be glad she wasn't the only one. So, future-related amendments. This is step one. There are some other things that we need to do. First of all, we'll need to adopt those development standards that I referred to. Our intent is to work over the course of the next year with the property owner and our team, whatever professionals we need to have on our team, and collaboratively work toward creating development standards that make sense for that property. We'll probably need to amend the hotel development standards, because one of the development standards will be hotel development standards for PUD 6 Tract A. In a destination resort, you may have a hotel that might have all the amenities that you want in a hotel, but they're not within the hotel itself. They might be adjacent. So, we just need to make sure that we're not creating something that disincentivizes a quality hotel in a destination resort by virtue of the existing development standards. We're also going to want to look at Chapter 3.3 in the Unified Development Code related to alcohol regulations, and make sure that we're addressing the types of things that we addressed in the music factory, where we allowed an aggregation of food and beverage sales over multiple outlets to be used to calculate the 30% food, 70%, 70% alcohol ratio. We don't know if that's the right solution. There might be several other ways that we could address that, but it is an area that we identify that we'll need to address in order to accommodate the destination resort-type concept. So, those are future-related amendments that we'll be working on. Next steps. These are possible next steps if the council's interested in pursuing this. We've outlined a schedule to present this to the Planning and Zoning Commission in a work session, probably next week, bring it back later that month in March for approval by, and review by the Planning and Zoning Commission in a formal action, and then we could actually get it back in front of the council for a formal vote and consideration on March 20th. So, we're really seeking the council's consensus direction on the draft ordinances that we've included and next steps. Open for questions.
Philip, first of all, thank you for your presentation, and, and thank you to the applicant for spending the time with you and us over the last few months as we, we talked through this. I, I am very impressed with the process that you are coming through and the timeframe that gets it started. I think starting as we look at this over the next 30 days gets us started, but then, then the work really begins, and Al's committee and others to come up with the, the administrative process, the development standards, and the permitted uses, so that we can work on those to, to get where we need to go. So, thank, thank you for, to you and everyone involved to get it to this point, to where we can get our arms around it and see where we end up. Questions?
Mark? Yeah, I also want to, I'm grateful to the applicant. This is a, you know, huge transformational project for the city, and so very excited to see this coming. What you've laid out, Philip, is, does not have a lot of detail to it. I would be looking forward to working on this in the future with Al's committee to, to get into that, and, and to consider a lot of things that we don't know about. And so, there's, there's a lot of things that we don't know. And so, I, I'm very much looking forward to getting into that analysis and seeing what is going to be the best product for PUD 6, what's best for the city, and what's best for the, for the developer as well. And, so, anyway, I just want to, I'm glad, Philip, the way you have this structured is that getting into those finite details is something that will be coming down the pike.
Yes.
And so, I understand that you have to start somewhere, and so this is good. So, appreciate that. But there, yeah, there's a lot of work to be done.
Brad?
Yeah, I concur, and I think, you know, it's, it's going to be interesting times going forward, and I think challenges and, and all this, but a, a great project. Looking forward, the proof is always in the details. That's kindly part, partly why we put Agenda Item Number 8 on, is really because this is, this is going to be so different than anything I think we've ever done, to make sure, you know, getting outside council going, getting any consultants you guys need because of the different nature of this project, and to make it great for the applicant and great for us, and just make sure we're getting everything done right the first time and moving as quickly as we can. I think it's, we're all humble enough to know we don't know everything about everything, and so there's definitely experts out there. I think a lot of the safeguards that are in there kind of ensures high quality. I would definitely encourage that with regard to, I mean, nobody, the applicant, none of us want a sea of multifamily over there that's low-level, and so make sure that the drafting is going to be that high quality that this particular owner has delivered. I think that the timeline is very ambitious, and so we've got to get out there and probably have some sort of town halls or something where we have some good presentations. I saw what I thought was a very good presentation, and I think, you know, it, it helps everybody wrap their brain around these kind of things and what this particular owner can deliver, what they have delivered, you know, their track record. And so, I think a lot of those things are important for the public to be able to absorb and observe, and, and to me, it is, I agree with Mark, it's a, it's sort of a transformational project. It's the absolute right location, in my opinion. Like, they purchased a major amount of acreage-- Like, they purchased a major amount of acreage really in an area that we won't see, some of the issues we sometimes see with, oh, it's right on top of my neighborhood or that sort of thing. So let me be clear, though, what we're doing today or tonight or whatever. We're not voting on anything. We're not passing anything. And there's a whole, whole lot of site plans, and as you point out in the drafting, a lot of things in the future where we're all can be on the same page. The owner has been very gracious with time and vision and all of those things that I think give everybody more of a level of comfort. And, you know, the future will determine a lot of what might happen. That sounds vague, but I mean, we just, there's many variables we don't know. And so the cities around us, all around us, who even have other tools, you know, are trying to be competitive at this, but we have a landowner who's purchased this property, who's already paying taxes and really wants to be a part of the community, I think. And so I'm all for drafting and moving forward on this. Again, we haven't seen anything, so that's going to be the proof and making sure everybody's comfortable. But I do feel like we should be getting out in the public and having some presentations. Again, I very much enjoyed the presentation from the other day. I think it's, it gives you a sense of history and a sense of vision and what's been accomplished. Now, maybe doesn't, everybody doesn't share the same exact view as I do, but I think at least is, to me, very educational, and then having the owners be that willing to come out and speak, and I think, I believe they're willing to do that. So I think that that really can, I think it will help a lot of people and give the kind of community exposure we want. So I'm all for moving forward. Again, I think you've, you've got ambitious timeline. I would say, my direction would be, go get, go get your outside council or whoever it is you guys need that does the intersection of all these things that can work with you, and then go get whatever experts you think you need, Chris, so that we can, again, move quickly if this is what we're doing, but also continue to move quickly because there's many, many steps ahead. So that's my thoughts.
Kyle?
Yeah, move forward. I think this is a new situation where we really, we may not be able to control the timeline. This allows us to maintain our seat at the table, in a table full of moving chairs. I think that, yeah, there is some work to be done, but I think this is the right step. I think this timeline, yes, it's ambitious. There wasn't just one meeting, there was two public meetings held that were posted for people to be able to attend and listen to two different theories and sides on this that were very, very informative. I didn't hear anybody walking out of either one of those meetings saying, we shouldn't do this, that this is what we should be doing. But I do think, I do think the applicant has a little bit of, you know, he is getting pursued or they're getting pursued by other people, and we know that. And I think that a timeline is something we're going to, to show that we are serious about it to the largest private landowner in our city. So I think this is doable, and I think it needs to be done in a pretty rapid timeline so we can show how serious we are about having this and we don't get into, because this will be transformational. This will change our city. Is it going to have some challenges? Yes. Is it going to have some rewards? Yes. And if you went to the meeting with the three cities that talked about transformational destination development inside their cities and what they talked about and the revenue that they generated, it was one city that didn't do theirs, and they waited 10 years, and his biggest concern was what they had lost by not getting to the table and staying at the table when the time was right. And I don't want to be that mistake. We like to learn from other people's mistakes, don't want to make the same mistakes. He was very good at informing us as to what it cost them when they didn't get to the table at the same time. So the timeline for me is fine, I understand it, and I'd like to go ahead and move forward and give the applicant and the landowner reassurance that we're serious about having a discussion about him, but we also have controls in place in which we're going to make sure that we have some say and some control as to what goes in and what doesn't. And I think you've done a tremendous job doing that. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes, and I concur with, okay, I concur with Kyle and Brad about moving this forward. Because I'm sitting here, oh, and I'm sorry, my next-door neighbor, Mark. But I'm sitting here, you know, and of course, you know, I'm a preacher, so when I start hearing things, I'm always writing down notes and everything, because I got a page full of notes. But there's three words that just keep sticking out to me, and one of them is vision, the other one is opportunity, and the other one is partnership. And basically, what we have is vision, is we've got an opportunity to put something in place to lay the foundation for the, who knows what the possibilities will be. But you gotta, you gotta, you gotta lay the foundation first, and these amendments to the PUD 6 is what lays the foundation for the possibilities and for the vision. You know, it's no secret, when you look around us, we've got cities that are doing some incredible things. Well, we want to top what they do, and so we've got a partner who has put skin in the game already because they purchased the property. They're just looking for us as council members to help do our part to ensure that whatever is built out there, you know, is, they're able to do it. You know, they have, it's clearing their minds that they've got council support, it's clearing their minds what the rules are, you know, and so this morning in T, in our TNR meeting, we got a presentation on the repair on the pipeline from Lake Chapman, you know. That was a vision of somebody 50-something years ago, and they laid the groundwork, they did everything that they needed to do to bring that to Irving, and I guarantee you, we are very proud to say that we're one of the few cities in the state that has its own water utilities. But little did they know that when they put that pipeline in, that this past week, somebody would be putting in a Y into that pipeline to actually carry water from another new lake. So, so these are possibilities, and so, and that's how I think, you know, I dream. And we've got an opportunity now as council members to really lay the groundwork and do what we need to do for the citizens of Irving to be able to have something that's going to be a major impact to our city. And so I'm on board with moving this. Do what we have to do, staff, do what you have to do to move it as fast as we have to move it so that we can give the assurance to the landowners that we are, we're all in. So those are my words. Sorry about that, Mark.
Al?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said. Thank you, Philip, for an excellent teeing us up here. So I think what's important is, we're not making a decision in the sense of voting. We're making a decision to continue the process so that we clarify some things. And I've got some thoughts that I want to put out because a lot of what you're going to have to do, and first of all, let me just say, I think putting this in front of the P and Z next Monday is too soon. And I'm going to make a suggestion that give the staff and you all, Jocelyn especially, and your team along with Philip, that we consider moving the P and Z meeting for one more week so it gives you a chance to really lay out and flesh it out, because I'm going to be very clear with you, I don't think the P and Z is ready for this kind of effort that we need to be dealing with because the timeframe is awful tight. And I would say, keep your 17th P and Z meeting, but move it one week so that it gives you time to really lay it out and put it, and get them there, okay? Because that's going to be the beginning of a work session.
If I, if I could, Mr. Councilman, there'd be two meetings with the P and Z.
I understand that.
You're suggesting that the work session where we just first present it to P and Z be moved to the 14th, or?
Well, let me ask, maybe I should ask a pre-question, and that is, has all the staff work been done that what you've given us to really bring them up to speed? So you're saying to me that you feel that a work session next Monday is the right timing? And then what I'm also suggesting is that we're, I don't want to compress this until we really have things in defined, I guess is what I want to say, because there's nothing I want to say. So if you're saying yes, you want to keep it?
Yeah, we're ready to present to the P and Z next Tuesday.
Okay, well, you're going to have to spoon-feed them for what I've seen of that commission. So let me also take it to the next level. Are you smiling? Let me take it to her, I'm really concerned, because everything that we're going to be doing is really kind of a precursor, and it's basically going to all be done at the state level, and it's not going to be done in this next session. It'll be done probably in the next session, during the session, so the next at least couple of years. And so the definition of everything to include resort, destination, including gaming, when I hear gaming, you know, I take my children, I used to take them, to Chuck E. Cheese. That's an entertainment gaming process. So I don't want to get caught up in definitions that we don't know what they're going to be like because it's going to come out of the state, and then we're going to have to deal with the actual ordinances to then implement. So the other is the, have we had any discussions with Encore where if we go forward with this and eventually, and the development itself, where the positioning of the substation would be?
Yeah, we've had some preliminary conversations with Encore last year. The owner of this property, we met with them, kind of talked in general terms about the scale of what could be developed on that property. So Encore is aware of the possibilities. I think when you come down to, just as you said, when there's a specific development proposal presented, they won't be caught off guard. They'll know that, you know, there's the anticipation of something significant on this property.
Okay, so what you're saying is that on March 20th, you're recommending that this council body take up a motion to approve whatever is going to come forward. Am I correct?
Yeah, the two ordinances in your packet.
The last thing I would like to say is that whatever we do, this council has to come out, all nine of us together, because if we don't come out together, then there's going to be some real questions on us. That's why, that a couple of the comments that Brad said in particular, and I think Kyle, I think Mark, I think Dennis, all of us are saying the same thing, is that we need to bring forward as much information. That's why it's going to be very important that, and by the way, there are three stakeholders of ownership of property. We, the city, the Sands Corporation with its Village Walk and 1 and 2, and the University of Dallas. And so those are the three major owners of land that are going to be impacted in whatever we do. The other players are going to be de-curred because of whatever development is going to be in there with that major levy. That's going to be an area that has to be done, along with the text dot and the other quote-unquote ancillary impacts or government agencies that'll be part. So I'm just kind of reaching out there because I get a little bit concerned that we may be moving a little quick, but as long as we keep in mind that we're moving to try to get us to a point where we can make a really informed decision in such a way that we're all going to be going forward, and I'm really urging all nine of us to do it together. So, thank you.
Luis?
So I do have a couple of questions, if you, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, back when we had the initial presentation in January, the city property was included.
Correct.
And that was, as I understood it, that was the reason why the city was applying for the zoning change. Essentially, now, just, I think for the sake of the residents' understanding, what is the reason now that it's only the property of, you know, Village Walk, Sands, whatever, whatever it is, you know, what is the reason for the city still going through that? Because obviously, some residents are going to be concerned, hey, whenever I want an ADU, I need to show up and go through the whole process, why different people get a different treatment?
Yeah, this is, this is a great question. There's two reasons. First of all, we're, there's, the two ordinances we're adopting are not the type of ordinances that you would request in a zoning application. We're creating a brand-new zoning district. That's not a typical zoning application request. We're also amending the PUD 6 document itself, the regulatory structure of the PUD 6 document, which is, again, not a typical request that would come from a private property owner. These types of regulatory changes are, at minimum, cooperative efforts between a property owner and the city, and in this case, the city's taking the lead role just because of the scope of the changes we're making.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. I have another couple of questions. So what would be, especially when it comes to the gaming use, the ability of future representatives, you know, let's say that some people were elected, you know, as a consequence of dissatisfaction from the community, what would their ability be to walk that back, if in any way?
The ordinances are adopted and repealed and amended at the pleasure of the council. If the will of the council was to add or remove sections of that ordinance of the entitlement, that would be something that they could, they could do. I think once, I don't want to get ahead of myself in terms of the ramifications of that, and Janet's giving me this eye here, I think once you give an entitlement, taking that away becomes a little bit more complicated. So it's not, it's not something that, that you can do as if you're giving an entitlement. Taking an entitlement away is more complicated.
Right, right.
I say that right?
And Philip, if I may rephrase. Philip, can you, again, walk through, I believe, again, this is going to be a multi-step, multi-phase process. There will be a number of bites at the apple that the council will have to either move forward or not move forward.
Yeah, there's, there's two bites of the apple. The first one is the creation of the development standards, because bear in mind, nothing can happen on the property in terms of private development, plating, building permits, until there are development standards. The approval of those standards is at the discretion of the council.
Right, but, but those, those standards don't have anything to do with the use, which...
No, that's correct.
Right.
The second bite of the apple is the approval of the regulating plan. The regulating plan, a portion of that will be laying out the uses that are contemplated on the property. That's where the council would have the ability to say yes or no.
Okay. But the council would essentially lose the ability to say no to a specific area of the development because, because of the use?
The approval of, the approval of the regulating plan is at the discretion of the council.
Okay.
And the regulating plan would lay out what is occurring where on the property, how the streets are laid out, what the uses of the buildings are. That's a portion of the regulating plan.
Because there has been some talk, and in prior meetings, some of my fellow council members brought the concept of perhaps restricting the gaming use to a specific area, you know, to minimize whatever controversy this could cause from the community. So is that, is that something that maybe the, well, the applicant, I guess, is technically the city, but the owner of the property would, would consider?
I mean, I think that the intent is that this, development of this would be a cooperative venture between the developer and the city. I don't anticipate a scenario where the developer just plops something, say, here it is, surprise, approve it up or down. I think that there would be a lot of discussions about that regulating plan before it's ever brought to the council. Bear in mind that the gaming piece is only permitted within a destination resort. A destination resort would have to be one of those elements that is included in a regulating plan in order for it to get built.
Right. So I'm just coming from the standpoint, because I've had some conversations with residents, and some of them seem to be concerned that this could be eventually like Vegas where you, you come down from the airport, you know, you come down from the plane, and you have a bunch of slot machines everywhere. And this is, obviously, you know, the airport is on the other side of town. I do get that. But within the side, is, do we know if this is going to be, because it, an example of what some people call predatory gambling, where, you know, anywhere in the, anywhere in the resort, there's all these slot machines, you know, you go, there's an arena mentioned, there's a concert hall mentioned. Is it going to be one of those instances where you walk, every visitor walks in, there gets offered a drink, and then there's all these little, you know, things... and then there's all these little, you know, things that are set up, gaming, you know?
I think these are great questions. I'm probably not in a position to talk about how the gaming is implemented. That's going to be number one, defined by the state, have to be approved by the voters of the state of Texas, and in compliance with whatever regulating body the state sets up to regulate that.
So that is something that regardless, the city of Irving is not going to have jurisdiction over?
The regulation of the gaming itself will be probably by the state of Texas and a gaming commission and...
Right, because, you know, I do think that the residents, obviously, within all that we can share, should be made aware of what it is that they're going to be getting. Because we're trying to move forward on perhaps the most transformational project in Irving's history in three weeks. And obviously, there's a lot to unpack. And to the extent that some of these things might tie down the possibility, future representatives to, to do whatever the residents might want them to do, you know, it would be good that they were informed and they knew that, what it is that they were going to get. If they're going to get, you know, this, the kind of, because not all casinos are equal. If they're going to get a casino that is very high-end, very restrictive, like some examples in Singapore, or if it's going to be something that combines, has sports and concerts, et cetera, and this sort of predatory gambling scheme. I think that's an important question for the residents.
It is, and that's one of the reasons we define destination resort as specifically as we did, putting a minimum of four million square feet, a minimum of a half a million square feet of convention space, which is atypical of your typical, it's not typical of what you would see in other types of resorts that you might see across the river, across the state line. That, that changes the nature of the resort itself, changes the nature of the business model. So I think there's, there's some differences there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, just a couple, you know, when it comes to direction, just a couple of remarks. Obviously, you know, this is a great investment for the city. But, you know, I'm told that I should be pro-business and that this is very much a pro-business thing. But whether or not that will be the case will be, will be determined by how it's legalized at the state level. Because if it's, you know, the most likely scenario is it's, we're, we have a state-enforced monopoly, you know, a state-protected monopoly, and that is, that is not, you know, according to the ideals of free markets or anything like that. So I think that the residents should be aware of that also. The other thing is that, you know, this is a transformational thing for the city. Will be a before and after. And what I hear from Sands, from Las Vegas Sands, as the state level, you know, the, the, all the advertisement campaigns always say, oh, well, you know, lawmakers, Texas lawmakers, let the voters of Texas decide, let them vote. Because there's, it's necessary that they vote for a constitutional amendment. But I mean, I must have missed it in the mail where the Irving representatives are asked to, you know, let the residents of the city decide, and I think, or vote or voice their opinion. A lot of the constituents that I've talked to don't seem to be very happy about, you know, about not being thoroughly informed. So I think the idea of town hall meetings, et cetera, is absolutely necessary. And there's also something there where...
I think we're, I think we're getting way off base of where we're going. Because anything to do with, with gaming is going to be handled at the state level. And at that state level, they would have to change the constitution of the, of the state, which would require every citizen to vote. It couldn't be decided at any one level.
Right, right, but the residents of Irving are not, are not being asked whether or not, in the event that is legalized, they would like that in their city. Because obviously...
I haven't had a single resident tell me this is a bad project, period.
Well, I've had, I've had a few, so...
I think we're in the weeds.
Yes, we're in the weeds.
We're in the weeds because we don't even know if gaming's ever going to be approved. And so the reality of it is, we're trying to solve a problem we don't have.
Your questions are irrelevant. Bottom line to this conversation. This is about men in the public, not about games. No, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to help him.
Well, I think the issue becomes, we're trying to solve something that we have no control over. But what we're trying to allow is the use if something is ever approved at the state level.
Yes, but it's...
The real issue for the residents of, of the city of Irving is to be with their representatives and voice their opinions to their representatives at the state level, both at their senators and...
But we are allowing that at the local level. And I didn't, I do think that, you know, for something so transformational, that, that will most likely happen and that will change the makeup of the city and the structure of the city, we should, you know, I was elected to do many things. There were many issues in my campaign. But for something so relevant, and this is the essence of representative government, yes, we are legally allowed to vote on it. But I do believe that I should have a mandate to choose on something so transformational.
You can vote no.
Exactly. And that's why my direction for council is until we get a mandate from the citizens, to, to the economic development and to city manager, is that until we get a mandate from the people, until we actually get their opinions and we have plenty of time...
So your perspective is, you're the, you don't want to move forward with it?
I do not want to move forward, no.
Okay, thank you. Kyle?
No, I just, I'm just ready to move forward. I think you already have your majority to move forward anyway, so it's just move forward. We got other things to talk about.
Right, I agree, and with the timeline that was given.
Okay.
So there's a consensus to move forward with this timeline?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you again, Philip, for the work. I'm okay with the timeline now, let's move on with it. Because I think at the end of the day, you know, you vote the way you want to vote, you know? Don't be beating around the bush. You're showing that you don't know what the hell you're doing, so, end of comment.
Next item on the agenda. Do we want to take a break before we go to the domestic violence shelter?
Sure.
Kyle, do we, or... So let's, let's take a 10-minute break, then we'll come back. And the next item we'll talk about is a domestic violence shelter feasibility study.
The North Texas Teen Book Festival is our annual festival featuring young adult and middle-grade authors. We usually bring about 70 to 75 authors every year. This year, we will have about 40-something panel discussions with authors. We'll have two keynote addresses, one in the morning for middle grade and one in the afternoon for young adults. We'll have book giveaways all day, and at the end of the day, authors will stay and they will sign your books for you. Four of our authors will have their signing lines ticketed, and you can get those tickets at 7:45 in the morning. So get there early if you want to have your books signed by these four authors, Arlstein, Alan Graz, and Rachel Renee, and Nikki Russell. It is a free festival. You'll be able to see over 70 authors, and we're talking big-name authors, all for free. And it's just a wonderful day for young and old alike to enjoy literature.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next edition of City Source, see a milestone moment as Irving elevates aquatics and recreation. We'll show you the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new indoor pool at Center Park Recreation Center. And it's the latest event in the Irving Marathon Running Series, Love on the Run. We'll cover that and preview the big change coming to this year's Irving Marathon. That's starting February 28th at 6:00 PM on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
My lovely snowman.
For Rebecca Charles, there's no fun quite like snow fun.
I was demolishing my friends and my sister. I was just shoving as much of snow as I could and throwing it at them.
Irving Parks and Recreation's annual Frost Fest welcomes visitors both small and tall to leave the event plaza for polar chills and thrills.
You get the smiles, but the little screeches, the little yells. For us, it doesn't seem too high to them. It seems like they're coming down an Empire State Building.
To really appreciate winter, you have to be able to touch it. And at Frost Fest, you get to enjoy that wintry touch.
I got to grab a big chunk of snow and throw it at my sister.
While there's plenty of Arctic entertainment for kids of all ages, and the Snow Tube Hills remain a popular attraction.
It was fast and pretty tall.
For Rebecca, it's tough to top a good old-fashioned snowball fight.
Was it more fun than getting hit in the face with a snowball?
No.
Because there's nothing quite like that frosty touch of winter. Robert Cheek for Irving Spotlight.
I just don't see how the world thinks such wonderful things could be so bad. Look at this stuff, isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm a girl, a girl who has everything?
We are presenting Irving Youth Theater's version of The Little Mermaid Jr.
You'll never guess what I found today. Look, have you ever seen something so wonderful in your whole entire life? Whoa, cool. What is it? I'm not sure.
The story is about a young lady who dreams of being in a different place. She really wants to be where the humans are, and she falls in love with a prince that she sees from afar, but she can't be with him unless she becomes a human herself. And so it's that story of her journey for true love.
Oh, I don't hear a heartbeat. Wait. He's breathing. Look at him, he's so beautiful.
I've loved this movie since I was like five years old. I feel like it's just exciting because I get to look at like the little girl to me and be like, hey, we did it.
I've always dreamed as a kid of like being on stage, being in a movie, like just doing all that stuff. So it really feels like a dream come true. I'm looking forward to seeing all those kids in the stands, like smiling and like just feeling the really magic of Irving Youth Theater.
The directors, they did like a really great job helping us.
Mr. and Dr. Hill are so kind. They're just awesome.
We love what theater does to help kids.
It made me feel more welcome, more loved, more just like I'm meant to be.
I wasn't always this like confident. It really helped me like become confident in front of an audience. And now I'm like, I'm not nervous at all to like say something in front of anybody.
Now, follow that voice through the end of the year if we have to.
I like Captain.
It's so much more than what's on the stage because it's important to be a great character on stage, but it's even more important to have great character in real life. And so that's what we believe theater does, and the joy of the audience of seeing a show. And theater just brings people together and, and fills people with joy. So for us, it's a true labor of love. We're just so proud of the work that the kids have done and that the families do to help bring the show together.
The weather is something less than lovely for Love on the Run. Even so, hundreds of people are at the Toyota Music Factory, ready to bear the conditions and go. This half marathon is the first race of the year in the Irving Marathon Running Series. In the utter cold, runners also take on a 10K and 5K. Given the theme of this run, we wanted to know what people love about running.
So many things, it's a stress reliever.
People, the community.
I think it's just so amazing to like push yourself towards something and like accomplish it.
Next up is the biggest event of the year, the Irving Marathon. Look at last year's turnout.
In 2024, we had our biggest growth that we've seen. It was about a 45% growth from the previous year, and we had about 4,200 people.
Because of that growth trend, this year, the Irving Marathon will be a two-day event, March 29th and 30th.
With the 5K and 10K being on Saturday, and the half marathon and marathon being on Sunday.
Race Director Lazaro Alvarez says a lot of factors are coming together to make this the time for more growth. Improvements are complete on the plaza at the Toyota Music Factory, and the marathon is building more of a name for itself, moving up in national marathon rankings.
And everything is kind of working out, right?
This race continues to be a qualifying event for the prestigious Boston Marathon.
It starts to attract a lot of people from out of town. So definitely at each event, we have between 10 to 15 different countries signed up.
And a two-day event provides an opportunity for the Irving Marathon to build business. Because runners have incentive to sign up for both days.
Get an extra medal and an extra Irving Marathon jacket for doing the Irving Marathon two-day challenge, where they run the 5K maybe on Saturday, and then the marathon or half marathon on Sunday.
The event's expansion is also giving a chance to boost the benefit to local students by raising more money for scholarships through the Irving Schools Foundation.
Our goal at the Irving Marathon in March is to raise at least $10,000. That would fund at least one $1,000 scholarships for 10 students.
Back here at Love on the Run.
I love the incremental progress, getting better, running longer.
You keep accomplishing things, you keep going a little bit further and believing that you can go a little bit further than that, and it just, it keeps you coming back.
Finishing with a struggle or with a smile, all runners have reason to celebrate.
I'm already doing Taki Tchaad, and then I do it.
It's so awesome, and Love on the Run has been so addicting because the energy's so nice.
People are amazing here. That makes us come back.
It is clear their heart is in this at Love on the Run.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, where there shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes. Go into The Breaches March 7th through the 22nd at Dupree Theater at the Irving Arts Center. March 9th is Second Sunday Fun Day at the Irving Arts Center with the theme, Playing With Patterns. Experience this free event to create quilt-inspired art led by members of the Irving Quilt Guild. Work in America is a photography exhibition featuring immigrants and first-generation Americans at work at small skilled trades. Explore the portraits and interviews at the Irving Archives and Museum through May 25th.
With a real-time crime center, this is the next step in law enforcement.
It's been a game changer for the way that our officers in the street are responding to calls and the awareness we're able to give them ahead of time.
And it'll have some great new accessibility features, service finder features, and search functions that's going to make it really easy to communicate with the city of Irving.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex.
The earlier that we're able to detect these runway drivers, the more likelihood that we can do something to either stop or alert drivers.
The expansion project's going to allow us to connect all our city facilities as well as position the city for some possible future private-public partnerships. I don't think there's a whole lot of cities doing that.
Look, this is, this is my house.
It's just exciting to me because you see everybody coming together.
So you start to build that community, that camaraderie, that relationship, that friendship, just to make your community better. And it's the right way to do this, and we did this right.
A lot of places don't have a mobile kitchen. The library tries to be ahead to pick up trends that will really benefit our patrons.
We're launching a customer relationship management portal that's going to make it super easy to report issues to the city. Whether you're on the go and you're seeing something out in the community that you need to report, or you're behind your desktop, reporting things to the city is going to be a breeze.
It's a sticky mess, just a big sticky mess.
We wanted to do something different. Let's bring the convention center in this. Let's showcase what we can do here.
We want them to be just as thrilled to see the size of a moon pie sitting there and have some real fun with it.
Hello, everyone, I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we go under the sea with a performance of The Little Mermaid Jr., presented by the Irving Youth Theater. And we learn about a new sandwich shop in the city that's offering a variety of handcrafted subs and authentic cheesesteaks. So tune in for the February 21st episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
We fold them in just like this.
Crafts created for canines and kitties.
And then we'll cut a small like triangle right here, so the cat has access to it, so they can kind of entertain themselves.
Members of the business community are working alongside other volunteers at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
I love to do because I love dogs.
They are creating enrichment activities for the adoptable animals here.
It helps them have something to do. It's obviously boring to sit in one place. So we give them an activity, it helps mentally stimulate them, and overall, it helps their quality of life.
Something as simple as a cardboard egg carton can become fun.
For the egg carton, we actually fill with treats, put some newspaper in there, and let the dogs kind of use their brain to open the egg carton.
Let's see what Rose thinks.
You give them a package, and now they're quiet. You give them a package and now they're quiet, they're interested, their tails are up, their tails are wagging. And you get to see the immediate reward.
And here is Evergreen. This enrichment is especially important right now because an expansion of the Animal Care Campus is underway, and the construction is limiting space for dogs to play outside. When it's complete, the expansion will benefit just about every function of Irving Animal Services.
I'm so excited to see the outcome of this.
Enhancing pet health with more space for isolation.
So if an animal comes with like an upper respiratory infection, they can isolate a large dog in that area.
And expanded veterinary facilities are among the priorities.
Clearly, this is a busy space. You'll need the room.
An agreement with the Family Place to help us kind of study the concept of a domestic violence shelter, help us understand if we were going to replace the domestic violence shelter that we lost in 2023, what that might look like, what amenities or what type of services would be involved, how big it should be. And so we signed an agreement with the Family Place to walk us through and work with us as we explore those options. They in turn contracted with Social Impact Architects, Suzanne Smith, with the Social Impact Architects is here to basically do a feasibility study. And this is the final report. Over the past number of months, we have been working cooperatively with the Family Place. You can see the city team was Councilman Taylor, myself, Michael Buckler, who's our Assistant CIP Director, Heather Koval, Victim Services Manager, Mel Despec, our Senior Manager over Housing and Redevelopment, then Lauren Hale, our Senior Manager over Strategic Services. All played a role in the city's team. There were representatives from the board and the staff of the Family Place. We worked together and came up with a feasibility study with some recommendations. So Suzanne will kind of walk through the feasibility study, talk about some of the recommendations, and then I'll conclude with the next steps discussion. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor, council members, city staff, as well as constituents, thank you so much for being here. This project, as Philip mentioned, is really the culmination of eight months of work of a number of people, really the best and brightest in the city and people like the Family Place who have been working in this as subject matter experts. So I appreciate you guys giving us an opportunity to brief you on the feasibility assessment. Some of you may be unfamiliar with the idea of a feasibility assessment, and really our goal with this is really to give you a sense of the need in the community. So getting a sense of the viability as well as the desirability and then really looking at, is this actually feasible? So for today, we're going to give you kind of a roadmap of the results. We hope this is more of a conversation because you guys got this ahead of time and a thick document with all the backup information. So we hope it'll be a conversation. As we go through each phase, I'll actually pause so that you can have questions, feedback along the way. So the first part is really going to be talking about the overview of the process. We'll then be talking about Phase One, which was the needs assessment. Then we'll be getting into the conceptual design as well as the financial implications. Where then we'll shift to the feasibility assessment and the report card overall, and then the potential next steps. So as was mentioned, there were a number of task force members, but I also want to highlight the 45 unique individuals who are also involved, the experts. So we had not only survivors themselves, which we'll give you a snapshot of that at the very end. We also had a focus group of ICANN, which I think provided us lots of good insights into what's actually happening and the challenges the domestic violence victims are going through, as well as stakeholders, people who are directly connected to this issue. So all of those people gave us good input. In your materials, you'll see in the appendix, those individuals. So first, let's start with the needs assessment. So if you're a data geek like me, this is going to be your favorite part. If you're interested, there is a 60-page report that actually connects back with all of this data. But essentially, we wanted to first look at what is the need? If you're going to build a facility, you've got to know a facility for whom, for how many. So we've got to really look at not only desirability, but also the demand associated with it. So the first step that we took was looking at secondary research. You'll note that the Department of Justice actually has a view that about 1% to 2% of any population actually are domestic violence victims. We didn't want to necessarily take that estimate of demand, although it was a fairly good estimate. And as we looked at your police department statistics, and they were amazing to work with, essentially, we looked at that, but we also wanted to look at the numbers themselves to see, did it actually capture demand? Was it more 1% or 2%? Or did we actually need to go a little bit higher? So you can see, we actually took the secondary research, married it with primary research, and really triangulated not only the reports for the police department, which notably, we also looked at the 10 metro area around the city of Irving as well to see if you guys were alike or different than other municipalities. We also talked closely with Baylor Irving and looking at their emergency room statistics as well. And then we did look at the largest provider, the Family Place. And you can see that even just out of the gate, we see at least 2,500 victims on an annual basis. So we know that it's at least 1%. We actually believe that the addressable population is twice that much, and we actually think the 2% is actually more likely. And part of that reason has to do with just unmet demand. You can appreciate because there isn't actually a shelter in Irving, people aren't really seeking services or saying they actually need shelter services. In addition, as we talked to the religious community, we also had a number of people who said that a number of the people who are in need of services oftentimes, instead of going to a shelter outside of Dallas County, they would go actually meet with friends and family members. So we think the addressable population is right around 5,000 per year. And so that's based on 2003 data. So from a qualitative or quantitative perspective, we think that's actually a good estimate for your facility. So as we looked at Phase One, our top recommendations were really five different ones. There were some short-term ones that we think you can do immediately. And then as we look at the facility and the feasibility of that, there are three more. First, one of the things I want to note as somebody who has worked with many different cities and certainly have been working in domestic violence for over two decades, the fact that you have the Family Advocacy Center is really a best practice. The work that Heather and her team does in that area is really second to none. So we really want to make sure no matter what you guys do, you recognize that real gift that you're giving to the community, having the Family Advocacy Center, not just on domestic violence, but also for child abuse. So continuing to put resources into strengthening the Family Advocacy Center is central to making sure you're providing services for domestic violence victims. Not every victim is going to need a shelter, and some victims actually do have friends and family members. And so that Family Advocacy Center is so vital to your emergency services. The second is data-driven decision-making. So what you may notice is that it's really hard for us to estimate how many people actually are needing services. So one of the things the city of Irving is already going to be embarking upon from the last budget is really doing a shared city database so that we can share resources across the police department and the Family Advocacy Center so we can better understand and track what victims are going through, who's coming back, what other resources may they need, so that we can have a better understanding of what services should be provided in the future. There also are many different providers across the Irving community. You guys have a wealth of folks who are very interested in this. And so additional coordination could also be something that no matter what, whether you guys move forward at the facility or not, there are real opportunity there. So those were two short-term recommendations. As we shifted to thinking about a facility, some of you know that Brighter Tomorrows went out of business, and so part of what we're looking at is what kind of facility would you need moving forward? So our first recommendation is really providing a one-stop shop. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that one-stop shop looks like. But as we've really looked at various facilities across the country, to be honest, even globally, of best practices associated with facilities, we really recognized that there was a real opportunity here as you're building this actual facility to really leverage that best practice. As we looked at demand, the qualitative and quantitative feedback said that the significant gap is in emergency and short-term housing, and we're going to talk more about that in the next phase. The next thing is really related to terminology. One of the things we've noted really over the last 10 years is that the nomenclature of shelter also is something that restricts demand. Not everybody, particularly people of means, feel like a shelter is a place that they want to go. So one of the recommendations we would make to the city of Irving is instead of calling it a shelter, to call it a facility so that that way there's a greater opportunity to actually get demand from all different classes, all different people who actually need services. In addition to that, we also are noting that the victim themselves, as you saw in the needs assessment, is changing. The victims are getting older. We have more males in the system. They come from all different ages and stages. And so making sure that we actually look at the broader range of the possible victims so everybody will come here and they know that we can meet them where they are. There is no typical narrative of what a client looks like. The next thing is supply. So part of the reason why Brighter Tomorrows went out of business was funding. So it's important that we not only look at desirability, but feasibility, making sure that we not only have funding to build the building, but we have funding to actually sustain the building over time. And obviously, the biggest restriction of that is actually funding. Many of you may know that most of our domestic violence funding actually comes from the state. That funding is actually from the federal government. So we will note that as we go through the funding recommendations in Phase Three. Any questions on Phase One or kind of color commentary before I move on to Phase Two?
Questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the fun part, the conceptual design. So when we looked at the facility, we absolutely knew there was demand, but we also wanted to make sure the demand was something that was right-sized based of, based on your need over time. Since we actually assume that the demand is going to be elastic over time and that as you build a facility, the demand will continue to creep up. So we looked at different conceptual designs, and one of the things that we really noted is the fact that really these facilities have not been in existence for very long. Actually, the early domestic violence facilities actually were homes that were remade. You can see this one in St. Paul, Minnesota as an example. And so really, over the last 50 years, as organizations have actually built these buildings, we've actually found that there are certain types of architectural structures that actually facilitate the long-term recovery of domestic violence victims. Not only trauma-informed services, as well as providing a long continuum of care with wraparound services, with the goal of really meeting the victim where they are. Some will need shelter, some will actually need a place to go, others will need to be coming in for services over a long period of time. The other thing we're recognizing is that there's also a generational issue associated with family violence. And so we also want to break that cycle as much as possible and make sure we're providing children services as well. So what we're recommending in this second phase is really finding a specialized architect, and we've actually supplied some of those architects to the city to make sure that this physical space is the right type of physical space. And one of the areas that we talked about, we're really thinking about new facilities since the location that we're potentially looking at would actually be a new location. So I wanted to share with you one example that we actually provided in the needs assessment, and that is one in Park City, Utah. And you can see it's a beautiful location, and it's really unique because actually it's one of the few across the country that is in a disclosed location. So one of the new best practices is actually not to have domestic violence shelters in undisclosed locations, that actually by disclosing them, you actually are telling people it's okay to talk about this issue, and people actually see it and they recognize that the actual facility exists. And so thereby, it actually increases the demand over time. So this one is in Park City, Utah. It's called Peace House. It was recently put together in 2019, and it actually serves the larger Park City area. And it has a lot of the best practices that we would recommend and we see in a lot of the facilities across the country, including soundproof bedrooms, gentle lighting, and a pet kennel. You may be asking yourself, why a pet kennel? Well, one of the reasons why people don't leave is because they can't take their animals with them. And so one of the best practices at the Family Place, as well as others utilize, is having those pet kennels. So just to give you a sense of what one facility potentially looks like. I recently talked to the CEO of Park City, and they actually are very interested in supporting this project if you guys move forward, and even will be supplying their architectural plans so that you can see how they actually right-size the location over time. So a couple of things that we looked at. So I want to kind of give you different options here, and so different future state scenarios. So the short-term stay or the best practice number two is the one I want you to focus on because that's the one we would traditionally call a shelter, where people come in and they actually lead themselves out of crisis into an area of just being safe. And that's typically the 30 to 60-day facility. And we did look at that, and we think that's definitely going to be primary for this. But there are also two other ones we want you to consider. One is the emergency stay. And it was really interesting because when I was talking to the detectives who are actually servicing domestic victims, as well as the hospital and the school district, they actually said one of their unmet needs is just short-term stays or emergency stays of five to seven days. If you can imagine, if a victim is needing to get out of a current situation but still needs services, sometimes shelters have waiting lists, sometimes they remove themselves from the situation. Maybe they don't have friends and family in the area, and that short-term stay can really stabilize them. And it gives the opportunity also for you guys to move forward with another best practice of the lethality assessment. And it gives the police, as well as the district attorney, really close access for them to connect with the violence victims until they decide whether they need to go to a short-term stay or go with friends and family. In addition, as you saw in Park City, number three is the long-term stay. Certainly, many domestic violence facilities have that long-term stay, either onsite or closely connected to the domestic violence shelter. So that could be something you consider in the long run. This allows for more independent living situations. It also allows them to get to self-sufficiency. So getting their GED, potentially getting jobs, until they can figure out what their next housing situation is. So those are some of the different possible scenarios that the committee actually considered. We wanted to give you a sense of location. You know, my job really here is to do, give you as much data as possible to really arm you with what the next steps potentially could be. So we did look at multiple locations, but we recognized there was one in your backyard that worked really perfectly. So if you guys know, there is actually right behind your Criminal Justice Center, there is a location. It is a little bit in the floodplain, and you'll see there that there are opportunities to mitigate, and your team has worked really closely with me to kind of make sure we figure out, could we actually put a location in here? And based on our early math, we think there is the possibility of that location. And it's perfect for a number of reasons. As we thought about where the facility should be located, we obviously thought proximity to the Criminal Justice Center made a lot of sense. It also is very close to the Family Advocacy Center. So we really felt like this was a great location for a number of reasons. So the task force recommended that you consider it at this location as a first priority. We also took a look at what you might want to include in this. So in order for us to come up with math that could really give you an idea of what it would cost to build the facility, we kind of have given you, based on the market size, what it would actually look like. So not only how many parking spaces in the playground, but what your floor one and four-two would potentially look like. Our recommendation is, is that you maybe build out additional floors and white-space them so that you could actually have that for future demand in the long run. We also did a little bit of estimate along with a Ridley and Goodnight to actually figure out how we could actually pay for it. So there's option A to option E. You can see that some of the different suggestions were 40,000 square feet. Some of them were actually a little bit smaller and had a smaller footprint, depending on the floodplain, depending on how the architect and engineer actually played out the scenario. We also did some different floor completions, just so you get a sense of what the viability would potentially be. What would it cost to build a building like this? So you can see they range with the midpoint being around $20 million. So our top recommendations, and then I would love to open it up to questions to kind of talk about the space itself, is really focusing first on emergency and short-term. We know this is where the most significant, most lethal gap is. And so we want to make sure that Irving residents have access to this resource. For longer-term needs, we do think the task force could look into the feasibility of the longer-term option, but for now, work with local nonprofits to fulfill this need. We also are recommending that you focus and work with local providers on ICANN, as well as Baylor Irving, to provide ancillary services nearby. This particular location is one example, has a daycare facility nearby. So working with them to provide daycare services versus providing it onsite. We do think the location that we just suggested is really the best location for a number of different reasons. And so we were recommending that you move forward with that as you consider the possibilities. And then we do think building for existing demand makes absolute sense. But we also think as you're building the building, it would make a lot of sense to have room for growth. So that's why we're suggesting either adding an additional floor or two additional floors for future demand. And certainly, you could co-locate the Family Advocacy Center there, their domestic violence services. There's other things that you could provide in the interim. So let me stop there and just see if folks have questions on Phase Two and the location.
Questions? Hale?
The location that you're, I think the map shows that... I'm just wondering, is there a possibility where we're already located with our Family Advocacy Center, that space up in there? Have you looked at that at all?
So I have looked at it. Michael, do you want to see whether, can you answer that question of whether or not the Family Advocacy Center has any possibility of expansion?
I could try.
My understanding is your space restricted at the Family Advocacy Center?
Yeah. That really was not a thought. No, microphone right there.
Oh, great.
The expense, can you hear me? Okay, the really wasn't a consideration of looking at any sort of change- There really wasn't a consideration of looking at any sort of changes to the existing Family Advocacy Center. It was a topic of discussion just from the proximity standpoint, and if you could bring things over and maybe relieve some of the pressure at the Family Advocacy Center, but not with any sort of expansion considerations at this time.
If I can maybe add some color commentary to that. You can see at the bottom where there is a floodplain associated with the drainage channel. We anticipate that floodplain goes all the way up. And one of our funding sources, particularly the HomeARP funds, has very tight restrictions on even using a lot where a portion of the property is in the floodplain. It opens up a whole nother bureaucracy that we would have to fight. So, we tried to stay away from anything that was associated with floodplain.
Yeah, that was my concern too, though. Thank you, Philip. So, because I know that, I just don't know if that area right south of where the Advocacy Center is, it just seems like that might be something, if we're going to do anything. So, it's just an idea.
No, it's a great idea. Thanks for the question.
It's kind of, I guess I want to say it's kind of in the same plane of family advocacy. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. So, the next phase was really looking at the financial implications. So what we wanted to do is provide you some high-level analysis of what this potentially would cost. We leveraged the Family Place in looking at what their cost structure looked like. We also looked at some blended values from some other family violence shelters as well. So you can see overall, if you take the midpoint of the construction costs, $20 million for the building cost alone, and again, this was for illustrative purposes alone, this may change as you guys consider building three, five years from now. The operator startup cost would be around $150,000. And then the annual expenses that we're estimating, based on the two-floor size, as you would actually expand to the third and fourth floors, this could potentially get bigger, would be right around $2.6 million. So not only the operating expenses, but also the amount of money that your operator would have to raise, both from government dollars and philanthropic dollars to operate. So that was the high-level financial summary. So from top recommendations related to this. So if we were to choose that location, there would be a need to replat and rezone, to make sure that that use would actually be provided for on that particular space. We also are recommending that you hire an architect with trauma-informed experience. There are many here locally that, like I said, have done these kind of properties before, but the architects in the other communities are very open to providing their best practices. And then making sure that the Criminal Justice Center actually kind of allows this building to kind of disappear, so that that way it kind of can be removed from the actual Criminal Justice Center. We also know that the funding is very much contingent upon what's happening at the national level. So continuing to monitor those changes at a federal level. I've had early conversations at a federal level, and it looks and it appears as if domestic violence funding is not going to be cut, but again, that's something that it depends on a lot of other externalities. In addition, the state is continuing to ask for more money in the state legislature for domestic violence. So we would continue to have conversations at a state level to make sure that, hopefully from day one with this facility opening, that they would have access to the state dollars to draw down as much government dollars as possible. And then last but not least, really looking at what the cost-sharing agreement would be. So as the city moves forward with building the building, it would need an operator. And so really thinking about what that operator or operators potentially could potentially look at. So, thinking about how that revenue and expenses would break down. Questions on Phase Three?
Questions? Yeah, I think the funding is always something we're going to have to be cognizant of.
Yeah, and when it comes back to the funding, there's been a lot of conversations in this, and I know Wendy Burton is here, she's on the board, and she's done a lot of work with, you know, Committee's Foundation of Texas, and it was, when we were talking about that funding, it was really hard to be able to kind of target, because I know city staff was asking about, you know, and you're going to see in the presentation, it says City of Irving. The City of Irving, in my idea, is private dollars coming in and raising money for private dollars. There may be some at the short-term from the city, but in the long run, it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be funded by whatever organization is managing and running it, and then raising private dollars inside the city. Because the last thing you really want to get into is, when you take federal, state, county, some of those dollars are reimbursement plan, and you have to have the dollars anyway. So, we did a lot of talk about the finances, and I know Chris and Philip and city staff have had a lot of questions. The challenge for us was, that are on the other side of that table, is it's really hard to go out and try to ask some folks, and we've had conversations with people already, when you don't really have anything really solid you can go out and sell and say, this is what it's going to look like. So that's sort of a conversation if we decide, if a council decides to move, after looking at the feasibility study, has a chance to kind of talk to it, chew through it, digest it, is, what is that going to look like? Now, we have had some successful conversations with folks out in the community that are willing to step in, and they've promised they're going to give a check, but until you see the check, you don't have the check. So, the other thing is, some of the federal dollars, there's some concerns based upon DC, and the budget, and the promises, is what that's going to look like over the long run. And so that is something, when it comes to the financials, that we've just really tried to vet out, is the best way that we could, sitting on all four sides of the roundtable, moving forward with the funding thing. So, having not, having not been involved in those conversations like I have, it's really hard sometimes to kind of wrap your head around that. And also, it's going to depend upon the operator. Does the operator have the ability to raise funds? Do they have, do they take? You know, some domestic violence shelters don't take any form of government dollars. So what I'm really best proud, what I'm most proud about this work is, is we kind of have an idea and a blueprint, if we decide to move forward, is what it's really going to take and what it's really going to look like with the feasibility study. And so, that when it comes to the financial stuff, because we did have a lot of conversations and some angst conversations about this as we moved through, which I'm glad we vetted it out. I didn't miss anything, Chris? Okay.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Yeah. So Chris, you've been involved with this process, so my question to you is, you're looking at about, on Option A, a $20 million price tag, that's just for the structure?
Yes, sir.
And then operational dollars. How far out do you think we are on this?
From a funding perspective, here's where you're at right now, just give that basic foundational information. You have $5 million right now set aside for the construction of a new domestic violence facility. Two main of that is the HomeARP that Philip mentioned. The other three million is from the general fund. So we have five million. The city is also, as you can see, under the current proposal, looking at providing the land as well. If we go up to, you have anywhere from 20 million, that's the average, you're 18 to 22, so you're split down the middle. We have that 20 million cost. Last year, as you know, Mayor and I were able to go out there, visit in DC, we were able to get through the appropriations committee, at the congressional level, another $10.2 million for the construction of the facility. The challenge we may be seeing there is, if you've been reading the newspaper, does anybody read newspapers? If you've been listening or watching the news or your podcasts, you may be hearing about this one big, beautiful bill. That's the new budget bill. That's actually for next fiscal year. We are in an existing fiscal year that the federal government has yet to actually pass a budget on. They have done continuing resolutions. Our $10.2 million coming out of appropriations is for the current fiscal year that they have yet to pass a budget on. If for some reason, they just continue to do CRs and then pass a new budget bill for next year, they would have to then do CRs through the remainder of this year, and a budget would not have been passed at the federal level for this fiscal year, which means that 10.2 appropriation, as far as we know and understand, would be gone. And we would have to then reapply and see what we can do for this next fiscal year, or even because it's already, they're already talking about it, it might even be the year after. We'll have to see. That would be a $10.2 million hit to what our current funding opportunities are. We'd have to look at that. So in answer to your question, Dennis, we would have to look for other funding opportunities on the capital side. I believe that Kyle, you've mentioned going out to the public and to corporations, foundations, looking for additional dollars on the capital side. As you can see up there from Suzanne's numbers, from the operational side, it's going to be a $2.5 million operational, 2.6 million, $2.6 million operational estimated cost as well annually. We don't want to be operating it ourselves, we'd be looking to have an entity come in to do that. We would ensure, we'd want to ensure that that entity has the ability to operate the facility, that they have the ability to secure the $2.5 million, 2.6 million estimate to operate it. What are their needs going to be relative to securing those operational dollars? Do they already have facilities that are in operation? And there are some, at times, federal requirements that if they have X number of facilities are already operating, they can't apply for additional federal dollars if they're already operating some number of facilities. We may have to work through that. There's a lot of questions here, but we always have a lot of questions relative to any project we do. We can always work through them. The timeframe and the time expectations, I think, is what we're just going to have to manage. Is this going to happen next year? No, it will not happen next year. This is going to take some time to pull together the capital, and then find the appropriate operator, or operators potentially, to come in and help manage the facility. And likely, those operators are going to have to have some reserves set aside in order to know that they can go into the first or second year of operation, that they have some reserves to help cover themselves, because I think Suzanne, you have another side of where they even had to ramp up into that, that there would be X amount of dollars coming in, first year, second year, third year, and it really isn't until that late second year, third year, that they would have potentially enough dollars even coming in from fundraising or from federal grants to be able to pay for that.
That's right.
From a federal grant perspective, then I'll be quiet. As you can see, there's a lot of changes right now in DC going on. It'll be interesting to see how all that plays out. It's good to hear that domestic violence may not necessarily be on the chopping block back in DC, but there are a lot of changes, and we're just going to have to see. We're in a very interesting timeframe from the funding perspective, but right now, from a capital side, we're planning on about $10.2 million from the feds. I know a lot of operators rely heavily upon, about 50% of their operations do come from federal dollars. That is a key component, and we're in some uncharted territory right now relative to federal funding.
So, you've got $8 million guaranteed on this $20 million?
There's five right now. You have five.
Oh.
Yeah. You have.
Okay, okay. I wrote it down. I wrote it down, okay. So you got, you got $5 million guaranteed, others $20 million you're going to need.
That's what we have sitting in our reserve.
Because you can't put no guarantee on the money from the feds.
No.
So, all right, so I'm going to go back to my question again. Five years, eight years? Because you still got to design and build it.
I just want to add one important fact.
We're time limited.
The $2 million is on a clock. It has to be spent by 2030. And so, if this doesn't happen near-term, we're going to have to make some decisions about that $2 million.
Yeah, and I got an idea for you too. The original idea. Okay. My point I'm making here is this, you know, yeah, we need a domestic violence shelter. Realistically, we're not going to have one probably within the next five years. I mean, unless somebody come up with a whole lot of money from somewhere, you got $5 million of about $20 million that you need. And again, how long is it going to take you to come up with that extra money? Then you've got to design the building, build the building, and then get you an operator. So, I'm not too optimistic about a domestic violence shelter in our city within the next five years. That's my personal opinion, but based on what I'm seeing, unless you, Chris, can work some magic, like you always do, and come up with a whole bunch of money from somewhere else, as Kyle said, that you've been hiding in the budget, I don't see us.
Just for the record, Chris, the city manager's not hiding any money in the city budget.
Well, that's what Kyle said, all right. Anyway, I'm not optimistic about one pretty, any time, so.
Yeah, I think, I can, real quick, just, the key before you even design a thing is you need to get an operator. It's really difficult when you're in an agency, when you, when every day you're worried about raising money for operating costs, and you're going into a city in which you really don't have any voice, or any area which can cause your board a lot of concern as you go into a venture someplace where you're not known, and, and so, yeah, so you bring up some very good points, and it's probably, you're looking at a four- to five-year timeline at all, getting ready to, you know, even look at this. The key, and why we did all this was because we set the $2 million aside on the ARPA funds to kind of give us some seed, some idea, and really, you know, we talked about doing this, and what I did with the feasibility study was to come back and just show the elected body, you know, this is what it's going to cost, this is what it's going to be, this is what it really takes to operate one of these. The Family Place, I'm so grateful that they stepped up and really helped us on that side of the table, have these conversations with, with what it takes, what they need, what they're seeing, same thing with the Family Advocacy Center. So we vetted this thing pretty deep and pretty thorough, so.
I'm sorry, Brad.
Oh, no worries. Go ahead, Kyle. No, I was going to, I'm going to be more optimistic, Dennis, because I think there's some, some good things going on in DC to clean up, you know, some long-needed things, and I don't, I don't, hopefully the broom won't sweep that clean, but also in encouragement, like, is there phases we could do that we could get a start over there? Because it's, it is a good location, it is something maybe, because we have a need. Every city's going to have a need to serve people in domestic violence, and I could just tell you, I've done those cases. We do those cases. We would definitely need a facility that's more than the few days, I can tell you that, because sometimes you can't even get into court that quick, and you may get an emergency protective order, and then that also begs the question, so if you get in the house, now you're in the house. And that's a piece of paper that's protecting you. So that's not always the best alternative, which is why you have shelters to shelter people. And so, I think just because something's difficult doesn't mean we pivot to maybe even something that's going to be more difficult to fund. And so, I would encourage everybody to, you know, thank you for all the work, so I'm not looking that. I think it's a, great on the feasibility study, but I think if we can think about doing this in phases, if there's money we have to spend, well, let's get started on something. And I don't know what it's going to do, and I, you're right, Kyle, you have to find an operator. There's very good operators, but all those pieces have to come together. But, this city certainly needs a domestic violence shelter. And so I would just encourage everybody to move forward, trying to be optimistic. Who knows what the future holds once again, but hopefully we have some, you're right, I mean, people can always promise a check. It's not a check until it's, you deposit it and everything clears, so, but I'm grateful, and I think, under the first two options, I think those are the better options. The long-term option, I think, becomes more challenging even to fund and to figure that out. There may be, there will be some extraordinary exceptions to some of the short and midterm that we're doing, but I think that is probably the way to go, at least to start it, and to get those funds working, Chris. I mean, why not? Why not build something for $2 million? I know there's a lot more to it, but even some of that looks like maybe it could be phased, and we've done a little bit of that in the past, but I think it's worth getting a start on, because there's, there's always going to be a need, so.
Other comments? Oh, Chris?
Thanks, Mayor. To Kyle's point, and looking at the council here for some additional direction, what I would recommend at this point, if the council does have a desire to move forward, to see what we can work through, we'll get a little bit more information as the feds move through the next several months of the budget process, that'll definitely help. But I think maybe at this point, having staff work with our consultant, and go out there and see if we can secure an operator, and then work with that operator to then get a design of the facility. And with that design, you can then take that out, look for different funding opportunities from foundations, corporations, nonprofits, et cetera, see how that plays out, and move forward. Those could be some potential next steps, and looking for council consensus direction on how you'd like to proceed for next steps.
Okay. Okay, let's get a consensus. How many want to proceed forward? One, two, three, four, five? How many don't?
We didn't help.
Yeah.
I ain't too optimistic about it.
Well, that's... Sure, go ahead.
Chris, let me ask you the question.
Chris, let me ask you the question. We have to use it for domestic violence, period? Or we just let it go away? I mean, we have an aversion to not spending money?
There are, of the $5 million that you have set aside right now.
Yeah.
Of the $5 million, $2 million of that is the home ARP money. The original direction from council for that home ARP money was for a non-congregate shelter.
That I remember.
Last year, the council adjusted and moved that over to a domestic violence shelter. The other $3 million is general fund money. There are no restrictions relative to time and the council has identified those $3 million for a domestic violence shelter. The timeframe is on the $2 million and we have five years to be able to use that.
But we have the ability to pull it back and use it for the original purpose?
Yes, that is, for the $2 million, yes.
That's what I'd rather do. Then we're helping homeless people.
Or there are other options even besides that, but those have been the two that the council is focused in on, the non-congregate and the domestic violence.
What always happens is we start down the road and we have money for specific purposes. ARP's gone, hopefully it doesn't come back. I mean, because we don't need another COVID epidemic, but at the same time, an aversion to try to spend everything that we could access, it has to be fundamentally what we really buy into, okay? And I'm fine with giving the money back, using our $3 million and the general fund for something else, if that's the case. But if you can roll it back, then we ought to try that for something, okay?
Yes, sir. You can, you can make adjustments and changes.
I'd like you to consider it at least.
Okay.
Could I interject just for a couple of seconds? It was interesting to hear the conversation around the money. And certainly, as an MBA, I'll be the first to tell you that there's a cost of doing this. But I also want to note the last slide. There's a cost of not doing something. The economists who've looked at this particular issues have been very clear that the lifetime cost to domestic violence victims, and this is not just the cost to them themselves with their property loss, but this is criminal justice costs. This is other costs associated with this, is over $100,000 per victim if it's a female victim. So there is a cost, but there's also a cost of not taking action as well. So I think that's something to take into consideration as well from an economics point of view.
I fully appreciate that, okay? But at the end of the day, we're not creating the violence, okay? Period. That's a behavioral situation. So that's a whole different application that ought to be looked at. This is a result of, and so now we're getting in after the fact, which I don't think we should at this point. And we've got homeless, we've got other things we need to use money for.
Chris, are we giving up on the 10-point-some-million dollars on the federal or we are still be able to pursue that?
No, we're definitely pursuing it. We're just going to have to watch to see what the federal government does. We're very active and working.
So what if it get through? Means we have money, right?
That would be 10.2 million added to the $5 million you have. So you'd have 15.2 million.
Ah. So, go ahead, Dennis.
And I just wanted to say one thing and not to kind of be combative, okay?
That's fine.
But when you mentioned the economic cost of not doing it, I would like somebody to give analysis of the economic cost to the city of Irving and our downtown businesses and everybody who is suffering because of the homeless situation we have in our city. So maybe if you can get your economists to do that for us, I appreciate it.
We'll get working on that for you, yeah.
So basically...
Mayor, any final thoughts or directions from the council?
I think there's a consensus to move forward to see what we do, but I also think there's a timeframe that basically if we find out with the $10 million's going away, which we think it probably is, but we definitively find, definitively find that out, we need to evaluate where we're going.
So first step, let's see how the next maybe month or two plays out with the feds and the budgets, then come back, provide an update to council, and then maybe look at next steps for this and what to do.
Well, I think the first thing, if I can speak, is you need to start putting something together to go and ask to find an operator.
Okay.
I don't want to design something and then have an operator come in and, you know, I would first just put it out and see if you can get any, if you can get an operator who would even want to come in and tackle this before we move forward about design or anything at that point, at least in my opinion. Suzanne, I may be wrong, but I think the first thing you need to do is look for it is try to see if there's an operator out there that wants to come to Irving and operate this thing, because it is going to be an ongoing and burdening, it's not going to be a burden, it's going to ongoing cost for them and the operation of anything that they're doing. And I think you're going to need to set up some parameters of what that operator looks like moving forward. That's the first thing, I, that to me is the first thing to do, see if you can't find an operator, because they're going to have someone, have some input probably in the design of how they do and what they want and move forward from there.
Completely agree. We, I would not want to design this without the operator in mind.
If you don't get an operator, you're going to have one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some attorneys here, so KO, you want to read us into executive session and we'll follow up on a couple of things.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The time is 3:40. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session to receive legal advice pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 5.
For Rebecca Charles, there's no fun quite like snow fun.
I was demolishing my friends and my sister. I was just shoving as much of snow as I could and throwing it at them.
Irving Parks and Recreation's annual Frost Fest welcomes visitors both small and tall to leave the event plaza for polar chills and thrills.
You get the smiles, but the little screeches, the little yells. For us, it doesn't seem too high to them. It seems like they're coming down an Empire State Building.
To really appreciate winter, you have to be able to touch it. And at Frost Fest, you get to enjoy that wintry touch.
I got to grab a big chunk of snow and throw it at my sister.
While there's plenty of Arctic entertainment for kids of all ages, and the Snow Tube Hills remain a popular attraction.
It was fast and pretty tall.
For Rebecca, it's tough to top a good old-fashioned snowball fight.
Was it more fun than getting hit in the face with a snowball?
No.
Because there's nothing quite like that frosty touch of winter. Robert Sheek for Irving Spotlight.
I just don't see how the world thinks that you want to put things could be so bad. Look at this stuff, isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm a girl, a girl who has everything?
We are presenting Irving Youth Theater's version of The Little Mermaid Jr.
You'll never guess what I found today. Have you ever seen something so wonderful in your whole entire life? Hello? Cool. What is it? I'm not sure.
The story is about a young lady who dreams of being in a different place. She really wants to be where the humans are and she falls in love with a prince that she sees from afar, but she can't be with him unless she becomes a human herself. And so it's that story of her journey for true love.
I don't hear a heartbeat. Wait.
He's breathing. Look at him. He's so beautiful.
I've loved this movie since I was like five years old. I feel like it's just exciting because I get to look at like the little girl to me and be like, hey, we did it.
I've always dreamed as a kid of like being on stage, being in a movie, like just doing all that stuff, so it really feels like a dream come true.
I'm looking forward to seeing all those kids in the stands, like smiling and like just feeling the really magic of Irving Youth Theater.
The directors, they did like a really great job helping us.
Mr. and Dr. Hill are so kind. They're just awesome.
We love what theater does to help kids.
It made me feel more welcome, more loved, more just like I'm meant to be.
I wasn't always just like confident. It really helped me like become confident in front of an audience and now I'm like, I'm not nervous at all to like saying something in front of anybody.
It's so much more than what's on the stage because it's important to be a great character on stage, but it's even more important to have great character in real life. And so that's what we believe theater does and the joy of the audience of seeing a show and theater just brings people together and, and fills people with joy. So for us, it's a true labor of love. We're just so proud of the work that the kids have done and that the families do to help bring the show together.
The weather is something less than lovely for Love on the Run. Even so, hundreds of people are at the Toyota Music Factory, ready to bear the conditions and go. This half marathon is the first race of the year in the Irving Marathon Running Series. In the utter cold, runners also take on a 10K and 5K. Given the theme of this run, we wanted to know what people love about running.
So many things. It's a stress reliever.
People, the community.
I think it's just so amazing to like push yourself towards something and like accomplish it.
Next up is the biggest event of the year, the Irving Marathon. Look at last year's turnout.
In 2024, we had our biggest growth that we've seen. It was about a 45% growth from the previous year and we had about 4,200 people.
Because of that growth trend, this year, the Irving Marathon will be a two-day event, March 29th and 30th.
With the 5K and 10K being on Saturday and the half marathon and marathon being on Sunday.
Race director Lazaro Alvarez says a lot of factors are coming together to make this the time for more growth. Improvements are complete on the plaza at the Toyota Music Factory and the marathon is building more of a name for itself, moving up in national marathon rankings.
And everything is kind of working out, right?
This race continues to be a qualifying event for the prestigious Boston Marathon.
It starts to attract a lot of people from out of town. So definitely at each event, we have between 10 to 15 different countries signed up.
And a two-day event provides an opportunity for the Irving Marathon to build business because runners have incentive to sign up for both days.
Get an extra medal and an extra Irving Marathon jacket for doing the Irving Marathon two-day challenge where they run the 5K maybe on Saturday and then the marathon or half marathon on Sunday.
The event's expansion is also giving a chance to boost the benefit to local students by raising more money for scholarships through the Irving Schools Foundation.
Our goal at the Irving Marathon in March is to raise at least $10,000. That would fund at least one $1,000 scholarships for 10 students.
Back here at Love on the Run.
I love the incremental progress, getting better, running longer.
You keep accomplishing things, you keep going a little bit further and believing that you can go a little bit further than that and it just, it keeps you coming back.
Finishing with a struggle or with a smile, all runners have reason to celebrate.
I already did turkey trot and then I did whip cross and then Love on the Run has been so addicting because the energy's so nice. People are amazing here. That's what makes us come back.
It is clear their heart is in this at Love on the Run.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, whether it shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes. Going to the Breach is March 7th through the 22nd at Dupree Theater at the Irving Art Center. March 9th is Second Sunday Fun Day at the Irving Art Center with the theme Playing With Patterns. Experience this free event to create quilt-inspired art led by members of the Irving Quilt Guild. Work in America is a photography exhibition featuring immigrants and first-generation Americans at work at small skilled trades. Explore the portraits and interviews at the Urban Archives and Museum through May 25th.
With a real-time crime center, this is the next step in law enforcement.
It's been a game changer for the way that our officers in the street are responding to calls and the awareness we're able to give them ahead of time.
And it'll have some great new accessibility features, service finder features and search functions. That's going to make it really easy to communicate with the city of Irving.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex.
The earlier that we're able to detect these runway drivers, the more likelihood that we can do something to either stop or alert drivers.
The expansion project's going to allow us to connect all our city facilities as well as position the city for some possible future private-public partnerships. I don't think there's a whole lot of cities doing that.
Look, this is, this is my house.
It's just exciting to me because you see everybody coming together.
So you start to build that community, that camaraderie, that relationship, that friendship, just to make your community better and it's the right way to do this and we did this right.
A lot of places don't have a mobile kitchen. The library tries to be ahead to pick up trends that will really benefit our patrons.
We're launching a customer relationship management portal that's going to make it super easy to report issues to the city, whether you're on the go and you're seeing something out in the community that you need to report or you're behind your desktop, reporting things to the city is going to be a breeze.
It's a sticky mess, just a big sticky mess.
We wanted to do something different. Let's bring the convention center in this. Let's showcase what we can do here.
We want them to be just as thrilled to see the size of a moon pie sitting there and have some real fun with it.
I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we go under the sea with a performance of The Little Mermaid Jr., presented by the Irving Youth Theater. And we learn about a new sandwich shop in the city that's offering a variety of handcrafted subs and authentic cheesesteaks. So tune in for the February 21st episode on ICT Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30 and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture and entertainment.
We fold them in just like this.
Cuffs created for canines and kitties.
And then we'll cut a small like triangle right here so the cat has access to it so they can kind of entertain themselves a little bit.
Members of the business community are working alongside other volunteers at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
I love to do because I love dogs.
They are creating enrichment activities for the adoptable animals here.
It helps them have something to do. It's obviously boring to sit in one place, so we give them an activity. It helps mentally stimulate them and overall it helps their quality of life.
Something as simple as a cardboard egg carton can become fun.
So the egg carton, we actually fill with treats, put some newspaper in there and let the dogs kind of use their brain to open the egg carton.
Let's see what Rose thinks.
You give them a package and now they're quiet, they're interested, their tails are up, their tails are wagging and you get to see the immediate reward.
And here is Evergreen. This enrichment is especially important right now because an expansion of the Animal Care Campus is underway and the construction is limiting space for dogs to play outside. When it's complete, the expansion will benefit just about every function of Irving Animal Services.
I'm so excited to see the outcome of this.
Enhancing pet health with more space for isolation.
So if an animal comes with like an upper respiratory infection, they can isolate a large dog in that area.
And expanded veterinary facilities are among the priorities.
Clearly, this is a busy space. You all need the room.
Oh, 100%. We have so many animals coming in and out of the shelter. We try to get as many ready for the adoption process, which is, you know, spaying and neutering.
But for now, that does mean construction and dogs are taking notice.
And sometimes with the noises, they're going to be a little bit more nervous or cautious or scared or they will start barking more.
With the work expected to last for a while.
How's it going? Okay.
Donations of items and time make an impact.
We really appreciate when volunteers can come in and help. It's a huge thing to be able to give our animals enrichment while they're kind of hanging out waiting for their forever homes.
Volunteers and construction teams all working with the same goal of helping animals
We would like to welcome you all to the ribbon cutting celebration at Lenny's Grill and Subs.
We serve delicious deli cheesesteaks and we also serve many variety of deli subs from our Italian to our American club to our turkey sandwiches.
Chicken, white bread, fish?
It's turkey. We also have our hot sandwiches. We have a hot Italian, we have a meatball and we also have a chicken deli. We definitely serve mac and cheese and it's a really new item on our menu and it's a delicious item.
It's always nice to have something new come in. Irving, Los Angeles is so special in that we have so many diverse people in town and so we have lots of fabulous restaurants and so I just say the more the merrier.
We have our first restaurant in Grapevine. That restaurant has been there for five years and we opened that location up in 2019, a little bit before the COVID shutdown. And so we looked at this location several times and we just wanted, fell in love with this location and so we decided to put our second restaurant here. this location, and so we decided to put our second restaurant here. We make everything fresh to order, area, fresh ingredients, fresh meat. Nothing is pre-made.
Celebrate the arrival of spring with the Festival of All Ages. Holly Fest takes place here at the West Irving Library, Monday, March 10th at 2:30 PM. Wearing white is highly recommended as guests will be given colored powder to toss at each other, and chalk will be provided to draw Rongoli designs. Christine de Clario's La Novia Tourist coming to Irving. Experience her powerful voice, inspiring story, and soul-stirring tracks. This happens at the Pavilion at Toyota Music Factory, March 14th at 8:00 PM. Unleash your creativity at the Stamp and Scrapbook Expo. Whether you're a beginner or seasoned pro, explore workshops designed to inspire and elevate your crafting skill. This all happens here at the Irving Convention Center Friday and Saturday, March 21st and 22nd.
The city of Irving has a wrong-way driver detection system, and cameras have caught some very close calls. Take a look at the car we circled and read as it turns the wrong way and narrowly avoids a collision. The cameras are located on frontage roads along state highways 183 and 161. When they detect a wrong-way driver, the system will send an alert to police. The goal is to stop violators before they get on the ramps and on the highways. These clips are just a few examples. The system has caught more than 100 wrong-way drivers so far.
And I think Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex, although it had been done by Texas dot and NTTA, it hadn't been done at the local level. And the key thing is it's trying to address a bad behavior as it starts.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong-way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers coming down the road so that they realize there's someone coming the wrong way, so they're not going to have that high-speed head-to-head collision.
Grant money from the North Central Texas Council of Governments paid for the system.
No more chains, no more bondage, I am free.
We appreciate each and every one of you taking the time out of your Sunday schedule to spend with us for just one hour to celebrate and honor Black History Month.
Irving Black Arts Council President Lenita Johnson organizes the Black History Month Celebration every year.
And Zora's voice is still ringing in mine, still dancing to the jazz of my memory.
It's a program that means a great deal to the community and to her.
It honors my mom and dad. We grew up seeing Black history in my home, and my parents thought it was important, not only for us, but my neighbors, because not all my neighbors was Black. So they thought it was important to share that.
She shares this celebration once again at the Irving Art Center with a moving dance. Special presentations from Irving ISD students, including a Langston Hughes poem read by DeMario Jones.
I live here too. I want freedom just as you, democracy.
And performer Janet Forni shares stories and poetry of literary icons.
We're putting on a production that entails Black history from the Cujo Lewis story to our guest today, which will be Mr. and Mrs. Martin, Ms. Irma P. Hall. We'll tell her story. I'll read some of her poetry.
It is their story that teaches us the power of connection, the power of hope and love.
It became important for me to let their voices to continue to be heard, and that's the whole premises for today, is that the voices are still heard.
The Black History Month Celebration brings the community together to learn about a significant moment in time while encouraging us to look at our own past.
If you don't know your history, you don't know yourself.
Which is why the program hopes to inspire future generations through this compelling showcase.
Every year is a new generation and a new chance and a new opportunity to sing, dance, honor, and say it all over again.
On behalf of the Irving Black Arts Council, thank each and every one of you for being here to celebrate with us. We will see you guys right back here next year.
I believe this spot has the opportunity for us to really take Irving to the next level.
Looking over here and looking behind you, you're going to see massive development. You're going to see this investment pay off.
We have been waiting a long time for this. The way it's come out has just been more than expected. It's turned out beautifully.
And I even think traffic being slowed down, it has been a benefit to us.
Now that it's over, we're just excited to continue to redevelop downtown.
You know, we're replacing a 50-year-old facility, so it's more energy efficient. This serves West Irving primarily.
This area has grown tremendously in last 30, 40 years. It is a very vital investment.
We've now got over 80 miles of road that have been overlaid and reconditioned in the city of Irving. We're looking and paying attention to just not the road condition underground, but also the rideability of the road.
We have done the first phase, which was from North Gate to Byron Nelson Way. That is completed. We are now working on the piece between Metker and North Gate. No question, it'll be a smoother ride, absolutely safer.
So we have an existing tank on Esters just north of 183. Due to the growth that we've seen through the years, it needs to be bigger. So we'll be taking down this facility and putting a brand-new 2.5 million gallon storage tank in its place.
I think one of the neatest things about this project is we've worked diligently to get federal funding for this, and about 50% of this project is federally funded.
The North Texas Teen Book Festival is our annual festival featuring young adult and middle-grade authors. We usually bring about 70 to 75 authors every year. This year, we will have about 40-something panel discussions with authors. We'll have two keynote addresses, one in the morning for middle grade and one in the afternoon for young adults. We'll have book giveaways all day, and at the end of the day, authors will stay and they will sign your books for you. Four of our authors will have their signing lines ticketed, and you can get those tickets at 7:45 in the morning. So get there early if you want to have your books signed by these four authors, Arlstein, Alan Gratz, and Rachel Renee, and Nikki Russell. It is a free festival. You'll be able to see over 70 authors, and we're talking big-name authors, all for free. And it's just a wonderful day for young and old alike to enjoy literature.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next edition of City Source, see a milestone moment as Irving elevates aquatics and recreation. We will show you the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new indoor pool at Center Park Recreation Center. And it's the latest event in the Irving Marathon Running Series, Love on the Run. We'll cover that and preview the big change coming to this year's Irving Marathon. That's starting February 28th at 6:00 PM on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
My lovely snowman.
For Rebecca Charles, there's no fun quite like snow fun.
I was demolishing my friends and my sister. I was just shoving as much snow as I could and throwing it at them.
Irving Parks and Recreation's annual Frost Fest welcomes visitors both small and tall to leave the event plaza for polar chills and thrills.
You get the smiles, but the little screeches, the little yells. For us, it doesn't seem too high to them. It seems like they're coming down an Empire State Building.
To really appreciate winter, you have to be able to touch it. And at Frost Fest, you get to enjoy that wintry touch.
I got to grab a big chunk of snow and throw it at my sister.
While there's plenty of Arctic entertainment for kids of all ages, and the Snow Tube Hills remain a popular attraction.
It was fast and pretty tall.
For Rebecca, it's tough to top a good old-fashioned snowball fight. Was it more fun than getting hit in the face with a snowball?
No.
Because there's nothing quite like that frosty touch of winter. Robert Sheik for Irving Spotlight.
I just don't see how the world thinks such wonderful things could be so bad. Look at this stuff, isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm the girl, the girl who has everything?
We are presenting Irving Youth Theater's version of The Little Mermaid Jr.
You'll never guess what I found today. Look, have you ever seen something so wonderful in your whole entire life? What is it? I'm not sure.
The story is about a young lady who dreams of being in a different place. She really wants to be where the humans are, and she falls in love with a prince that she sees from afar, but she can't be with him unless she becomes a human herself. And so it's that story of her journey for true love.
I don't hear a heartbeat. Wait. He's breathing. Look at him. He's so beautiful.
I've loved this movie since I was like five years old. I feel like it's just exciting because I get to look at like the little girl to me and be like, hey, we did it.
I've always dreamed as a kid of like being on stage, being in a movie, like just doing all that stuff, so it really feels like a dream come true.
Now that I'm up here on the sea.
I'm looking forward to seeing all those kids in the stands like smiling and like just feeling the really magic of Irving Youth Theater.
The directors, they did like a really great job helping us.
Mr. and Dr. Hill are so kind. They're just awesome.
We love what theater does to help kids.
It made me feel more welcome, more loved, more just like I'm meant to be.
I wasn't always this like confident. It really helped me like become confident in front of an audience, and now I'm like, I'm not nervous at all to like say something in front of anybody.
Now, all that voice to the end of the year, we have to.
I like Captain.
It's so much more than what's on the stage because it's important to be a great character on stage, but it's even more important to have great character in real life. And so that's what we believe theater does, and the joy of the audience of seeing a show. And theater just brings people together and fills people with joy. So for us, it's a true labor of love. We're just so proud of the work that the kids have done and that the families do to help bring the show together.
The weather is something less than lovely for Love on the Run. Even so, hundreds of people are at the Toyota Music Factory, ready to bear the conditions and go. This half marathon is the first race of the year in the Irving Marathon Running Series. In the utter cold, runners also take on a 10K and 5K. Given the theme of this run, we wanted to know what people love about running.
So many things. It's a stress reliever.
People, the community.
I think it's just so amazing to like push yourself towards something and like accomplish it.
Next up is the biggest event of the year, the Irving Marathon. Look at last year's turnout.
In 2024, we had our biggest growth that we've seen. It was about a 45% growth from the previous year, and we had about 4,200 people.
Because of that growth trend, this year, the Irving Marathon will be a two-day event, March 29th and 30th.
With the 5K and 10K being on Saturday, and the half marathon and marathon being on Sunday.
Race Director Lazaro Alvarez says a lot of factors are coming together to make this the time for more growth. Improvements are complete on the plaza at the Toyota Music Factory, and the marathon is building more of a name for itself, moving up in national marathon rankings.
And everything is kind of working out, right?
This race continues to be a qualifying event for the prestigious Boston Marathon.
It starts to attract a lot of people from out of town. So definitely at each event, we have between 10 to 15 different countries signed up.
And a two-day event provides an opportunity for the Irving Marathon to build business because runners have incentive to sign up for both days.
Get an extra medal and an extra Irving Marathon jacket for doing the Irving Marathon two-day challenge where they run the 5K maybe on Saturday and then the marathon or half marathon on Sunday.
The event's expansion is also giving a chance to boost the benefit to local students by raising more money for scholarships through the Irving Schools Foundation.
Our goal at the Irving Marathon in March is to raise at least $10,000 that would fund at least one $1,000 scholarships for 10 students.
Back here at Love on the Run.
I love the incremental progress, getting better, running longer.
You keep accomplishing things. You keep going a little bit further and believing that you can go a little bit further than that, and it just, it keeps you coming back.
Finishing with a struggle or with a smile, all runners have reason to celebrate.
I already did turkey trot, and then I did whip cross, and then Lord on the run, it's been so addicting because the energy is so nice. People are amazing here. That's what makes us come back.
It is clear their heart is in this at Love on the Run.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, whether it shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes.
Items two and three are approval of the minutes from February 6th. Item four is amending ordinance number 2024-10996, providing budget adjustment number three to the 2425 fiscal year budget. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just on the budget, I think one of the components that you're going to see in there is again the rearranging and the readjusting of our capital plan and the bond plan for Station Number Nine rebuild and how we're swapping one and nine in order to facilitate that. Part of what the budget adjustment shows is also there was $1.7 million that was identified for the design and engineering of the police evidence and property building. In order to move forward a little bit more aggressively than the schedule had for the original nine-in-one swap, wanting to move that forward one year, we're going to identify that 1.75 million for the potential property purchase for nine and the design of nine. In the meantime, the chief is, and Derek, there you go. The chief is going through a process of his facility analysis, and he will be coming forward here in the next several months to let you know what his facility analysis is going to be. There is a possibility that that new property and evidence building could be incorporated into the design and the function of a new larger facility. So just wanted to make sure that as you guys look at that, you're going to see that 1.7 million that was for the design and engineering of the property and evidence building, that is going to be now set aside for the potential property purchase if needed for Fire Station Nine and the design of nine. But if the consultant comes back with the chief and says, hey, we still need to move forward on a separate property and evidence building, we will then look to find that 1.7 million in cash to begin that process so that way we would not be holding up the police department and anything like that. So just want to make sure we're not using any police dollars that were identified for fire. This is a simple swap, and we'll make sure we're guaranteeing while the chief finishes his facility analysis.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, because we talk about how Chris hides money everywhere, that there will be the 1.7 somewhere to, if it is needed, so.
All right. Kyle's last shot across the bar. Item number five is taking necessary's concern, any necessary actions concerning the city attorney's compensation benefits. Item number six is a resolution approving a fund sharing and fiscal agency agreement between the County of Dallas and the Cities of Dallas, Box Springs, Carrollton, DeSoto, Duncanville, Garland, Grand Prairie, Irving, Lancaster, Mesquite, and Richardson, authorizing the City of Dallas to serve as the fiscal agent to administrate, administer the distribution of the 2024 Justice Assistant Grants.
to administer the distribution of the 2024 Justice Assistant Grants. Item number seven is approving submission of the General Victims Assistant Direct Services Program Grant Application to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for Specialized Trauma Services Partnership and design, designating the city manager as the authorized official to apply for, accept, reject, alter, and terminate the grant on behalf of the city. Item number eight is approving an amendment to the group health benefit plan for retirees for the city of Irving. Item number nine is approving, go ahead.
I'm going to ask about nine.
A nine? Nine is a resolution approving a discretionary service agreement between the City of Irving and Encore Electric Delivery LLC for the installation of 47 streetlights on Promenade Parkway and Los Colinas Boulevard.
Is there a presentation on this?
Dan's right there.
Okay.
Right out of his seat and ready to go.
I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for this, sir. What it is, it's the lighting in conjunction on Promenade in front of the Wells Development. What we're doing is we're taking it from Promenade Court. That's where the rail station is. Bringing the lighting down to Philadelphia, the decorative lights, both sides. Promenade going to the west, and once you get with Los Colinas, it'll go all the way to Northwest Highway.
All right, thank you. I had a kind of a question. Typically, you know, we hear about how Encore provides lights. So why is it the city's providing lights? Streetlights?
I don't understand the question. One more time, sir.
Streetlights are typically paid for by Encore, right?
Paid for by the developer.
Okay, by the developer.
Yes, sir.
So we're doing that in our?
Part of the development.
It's part of our deal with?
That was part of your EDIA.
Right.
Okay, all right. And where will that put us as far as like the completion of the promenade around Lake Carolyn?
This is all on the road system. This isn't anything on the walking system itself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Item number 10 is approving an expenditure with Mart Inc. in the amount of $190,115 for the Trinity Rail Express Sowers Bridge, broad-bridgeted, lead-based paint stabilization and repainting project through an interlocal agreement. Dart said that they shared this cost with us. What, what did they really share with us on this? Do we know? I mean, we, they did, did they pay? I'll get it out. Did they pay for everything under the one on O'Connor? And now that we're paying for everything under the other one?
No, sir. They split the cost for both projects. It was 50/50 for the encapsulation and repainting of the walls and also the railing. That was also the metal. So it's the same setup, 50/50 split between the city and Dart.
And I thought that's what it was, but today they kind of made reference that they paid for everything. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was curious about this one as well. And Dart kind of answered the question a little bit in their, in their presentation. But so there's going to be a mural on this bridge as well?
No, sir. This is only going to be painted. Just encapsulated, we'll put the black, you know, railing that's all rusted and gray.
Right.
That'd be painted black, concrete would be painted white. And that's all that's going to happen. Nope, no further.
So is that, is that our infrastructure or our land, or is it Dart's?
It's Dart's.
So what benefit is it to us to finance there?
It's a beautification to the Heritage District.
I mean, sure, that's true. But this is their?
Correct, but we can't force them to paint it. So sometimes you do a partnership to go out and have it painted.
I mean, is there an environmental impact to not doing this?
There is not.
Okay.
So if we want to get it done, we need to cough up half the money?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, they're just not going to do it.
Correct. Yeah, they have no plans to repaint it, so.
I was hoping you'd say, yes, there's an environmental impact to not doing this because then we could get the EPA on them.
Yes, sir.
No, I think, and that's why I asked the question I asked, because when, you know, and they never talked about the pact that we've been working on this for three years to get it to this point. But when they agreed to pay 50/50, I said, can we get them to do the other one too? Because it looks like it needs to be done. And so that's what I think, so that's what they did do, so. But they kind of insinuated that they paid everything. So I just wanted to make sure that my thought process was correct. Thank you. Item number 11 is approving the expenditure with InstaForm Technologies in the amount of $3,230,235 for a windmill, old mill, circle water improvements project. We heard about this today, and we're getting rid of a nice cast iron pipe and working on getting that all cleaned up. Item number 12 is authorizing the termination of a contract between the City of Irving and Greenverse Construction for the Riverside Drive and North O'Connor Boulevard intersection improvement project. We heard about this one as well today. Concerns we have about where the saw cuts are. Item number 13 is approval of professional service agreement between the City of Irving and Housing Forward in a total estimated amount of $220,000 for consulting services for managing Irving's homeless division program. Item number 14 is ratifying the?
Let me ask you a question about number 13 real quick.
Sure.
The, so the number 13 talks about funding staff members. Those are staff members of the nonprofit, is that right? Okay, thank you.
That's it. Item number 14 is ratifying the payment made to Ajigyan Corporation and DBA Technologies for a total estimated amount of $372,542.50 for emergency replacement of a cast iron water main. I guess this is the one for that. Item number 15 is ratifying the payment made to SYB Construction in a total estimated amount of $178,400 for emergency placement of an eight-inch water meter at Pleasant Run Road. The bids are items 16 through 31. Any questions on any of those bids? Item number 31, number 32, excuse me.
Mayor, I did have one question.
Sure.
Number 22, I don't need any kind of big presentation, but that's asphalt milling overlay services for Hunter Farrell Road, $850,000. We're not adding on to the road. We're just, that's just basically maintenance or protection of the existing.
We're going to actually grind it and repave it and resurface it. It'll be a brand-new asphalt road.
Same road that exists now, then?
Correct.
So we're creating a new racetrack.
Mayor? Well, that too, I guess.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Al?
Yes, I got a call yesterday, and I won't tell you who it is. You can probably figure out who it is. Says he owns property right across the street from our landfill. Okay? And he says, you need to bring up that once you make the road Hunter Farrell nice and smooth and everything, they have drag races in the middle of the night. So, chief?
You heard me, right? Okay. So we don't want to do speed bumps?
I don't know. You know, I'm just putting it out there. I mean, but I do think that the point is that there's been some, over the years, I think there's been some wrecks and some people have been killed and a few things like that. So I think that it's one of the precautions that at least we need to think about from your side there, Orlando and our, and our police department. Because however they want to handle it, you handle it. But it was enough that a fellow that sees it, he's actually had a couple of the wrecks that actually gone into his property, and the people were, did not survive, so. End of comment.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment too. I'm glad you're doing that because I actually go to the landfill kind of often, and that road is horrible. It's to the point that I drive in the center of the road. And so you can imagine all the wear and tear that's having on the equipment, you know, and the trucks that are going out there up and down that road. So I think it's, yeah, it's worth the investment.
Okay. Item number 32 is an ordinance designating and recognize the entire area within the city of Irving as municipal limits as media production development zone pursuant to Chapter 485A of the Texas Government Code. Item number 33 is an ordinance nominating the real property at 2203 West Royal Lane for designation as a qualified media production development location pursuant to Chapter 485A of the Government Code. Item number 34 is an ordinance amending Section 30-30 of Chapter 33, monthly charges for residents, apartments, and churches for Code of Civil and Criminal ordinances of the city of Irving, Texas by providing for amended charges, providing a saving clause and providing a servability clause and providing an effective date. Item number 35 is amending? Sure, go ahead.
Can I just say something about that one? It's, it's a feel-good item because I guess because of some typo, it's not a massive savings, but a credit's going to be issued to residents in billing cycles, basically to reduce that charge for senior citizens to get our Section 3330 in alignment with the 20% senior discount. So I think it's good, and it's good, good keeping an eye on everything for, for the seniors because they get that discount. So it'll, again, a small savings, but something's better than nothing.
Right. So it goes from 35, 25 with a 20% discount to 28, 20. Number 35 is Chapter 33B entitled Special Events of the Code of Civil and Criminal ordinances of the city of Irving, Texas by adding a new article entitled Neighborhood Block Parties. And that brings us to our zoning cases. And I can still say it's, heck, good afternoon.
Yes, it is. Not evening yet.
Not evening yet.
I'll go as fast as I can.
Oh, just make sure you're thorough.
I will do my best. All right, just a few cases tonight, a few companion cases. First one is a temporary use permit for Irving Mall wanting to expand. You can do a various carnivals and events and various temporary uses up to 30 days total in a year. And as y'all have seen several times before, the mall typically goes over that. So this is one of those cases. As of March 2nd, they do a rolling 30 days, and they need one more day in order to do a, I believe this is the paranormal circus, which don't ask me what that is. We've had the weird discussion at P&amp;Z. But that's what they're wanting to do. So they're asking for one more day within their 30-day rolling time period. You can see in this picture, it's interesting when they did the aerial. You can actually see a carnival on the site. So, pardon? They, the paranormal circus will operate for four days in mid-March. We also have, we understand that the mall is probably going to come back in the next month or so for more time, and we will process that when we receive that request. So here's just a general layout of what they intend to do and keep it all within the mall property. You can see they do have a large tent. Trying to see how big it's going to be. It's going to be a good-sized tent, hold several hundred people. And they are going to be accommodating their parking, and they say they're going to have those under controlled, under control. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? On to the next one.
Next is at Irving Mall as well. This is a, it used to be, I believe it was a Mervyn's from what I understand. And so it's two levels that have been condo-ed out within this existing tenant space. They are asking to do an SP1 RAB for a private club for a card room and restaurant. Staff recommends denial, P&amp;Z recommends denial, seven to zero. You have some updated letters of support and opposition. The letters of opposition, I'll get to in a second, but they are the mall ownership and some of the owners adjacent to this property. The letters of support, we were not able to identify where they were from. Particularly, some of them had addresses that weren't in the city. But in general, we, they did not appear to be from the immediate area. I wanted to add too, the reason you're seeing this is because they did get in before the October 3rd date when the conditional use permit ordinance was approved. So that's why you're seeing this case. So again, this is a property, it's attached to Irving Mall. It's a two-level property, so this would be the second floor. The first floor is an event center currently. And so this is owned by Golden Ram. So the property in pink is, obviously, this is the building itself, and then they own this area of the parking lot. So of course, we did send notices within the 200-foot area. And the way it ends up, we essentially have 100% opposition, which is very unusual, but it's because we calculated the malls. We got Macy's here, and then the mall itself. So those are both in opposition. This is actually mall property as well. And then the first floor owner that shares ownership of this property was in opposition. So that's how we came to that calculation. Again, so on its core, it's just a card house with an RAB request. They have plenty of parking. They, this is their floor plan. This is not tied to the ordinance, but this is what they intend to do. So there's a truck well here on the east side. Let me get to a picture. So this essentially walks into the second floor. So they will not have access to the mall itself. There will be a, go back to this for a second. This wall will be installed. So there's a whole area over here that attaches to the mall. So they will be, it'll be a walk in directly into the second floor. And this is obviously from the south side. So the event center comes in on this floor, and then the card room would come in on the upper floor. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mark?
I was just curious, when you calculate the parking, because there's parking all around the mall, what do you look at for the parking calculation?
Inspections keeps account of, the whole area has a shared parking. So even though they only own kind of a strange, it's kind of the same, oh, excuse me, the same thing with the carnival as well. But there's a shared agreement across the different ownerships. Obviously, there's, if we did a real count, we'd be counting the parking spaces behind the mall. I mean, there's obviously plenty of parking. Is it where people want to park? You know, maybe, maybe not.
Don't, don't that, that, I'll get it out. The shared parking agreement goes away in a few years. I know that's one of the things we've been talking about with the ownership of the mall. So, because each of those owners owns a portion of it. So I think at some point, we're, yeah, that shows exactly who owns what.
Right.
And so once that parking sharing agreement goes away, I think we'll be able to divvy it up a little better.
Yeah, inspections will have to go in and divide that up if and when that happens. It'd be difficult to enforce, that's for sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, the next case is on Yale Street, have to have a carport. So it's a R7-5 carport in the front setback. There's no hardship. P&amp;Z recommended approval, six to one, no opposition or support. This is, I'm going to go to a map. This is an area, so the ones in yellow used to be carport blocks back from the 90s. And therefore, the ones in, the properties in pink have carports. So they're not completely unusual in this area. And they're just wanting to do a typical carport, the 10-foot front setback, open on three sides, just a standard carport. And so here's a picture of the subject property. The property literally right next door has a metal carport. There we go. And then another one just a couple doors down. So they're not unusual in this subdivision. Be happy to answer your questions.
Questions? On to the next one.
Okay. This is on Singleton, so this is on the east side, just off Loop 12. Their CW Commercial Warehouse wanting to go to COU2. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z was denial, four to three, no opposition or support. So this is an odd property where Singleton, at some point, used to cut straight through when they expanded Loop 12 with their acquisition. They're actually addressed as Singleton, but their, their access is from the Loop 12 access road. So they are just wanting to sell the property, and the COU2 will give us more flexibility. We have some auto uses to the north. This property and the property to the south, there's own This property and the property to the south, there's own CW. So they are just wanting to be consistent in order to make it marketable. P and Z's basis of denial was just not particularly wanting to approve it without knowing what was going to happen on the property. So here's just some differences between the current CW zoning, which is a commercial warehouse, which is pretty much for the indoor types of uses. The COU-two is an outdoor commercial, and it does expand a little bit more. COU-two is very much of an automotive-based district. And just some pictures of the property. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any? Go ahead, Brad, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think it definitely resonated me with a little bit, to me on, well, they want this zoning because it's going to increase the value of their property just to sell it. Like they're, they don't have a plan to do this. And they're not a huge difference, but I'm a little concerned with, and we're seeing more of it, but commercial outdoor, that we do, do we really have a handle on kind of what we're doing on that? And there's definitely an impact. And so I just think, I mean, if they were proposing something specific, I might be able to get on board with it, but this is, this is just a change without any, they're not going to be actually building anything or doing any of this. My understanding is they wanted this change just to make it more valuable to sell it, which, you know, I get that, but I also think, let's bring in somebody who's ready to do the property. And again, I have a little bit of a concern, you know, going from warehouse to outdoor use is probably not the worst thing in the world, but it's also, we're just seeing more and more of these outdoor uses, so.
Yeah, I agree with you. John?
Thank you, Mayor. I take a little bit of an opposite approach on this one. If I think the, I mean, first of all, it's straight zoning, so there are no variances. He just wants to change the allowed use because he thinks it's what's best for his property, and if it fits in the area, I'm kind of inclined to give the owner what he's asking for if, you know, if I can't think of a good reason not to. You know, I mean, I agree about, it would be nice to see what it could become or what the proposal is, but, you know, ultimately, it's not my property. And if he's coming out to us, going out of his way to bring his zoning case to us, and it fits, I've got a, I've got a hard time telling him no, just because he doesn't, he doesn't have a proposal himself. So I think I'll be supporting this one for that reason.
Al?
Let me ask a question. Do we know, or what, some of the discussion maybe, Justin, but with the P and Z, as to what the use would, why take it from where it is, where it's a warehouse, and now it's going to the outside use as well? Is there something he wants to do with it outside?
I understood that he's marketing it, and those are, he's getting most of his interest from similar uses, so there's automotive uses to the north, and that just seemed to be what he understood the market was looking for. It's pretty small for CW for a warehouse type of use, so it would have to be just a little landscape business or plumbing business or something that would want to use that. But I think it's just what he heard the market was looking for.
Oh, he's trying to sell it, is what it had, and this may be a faster way to sell it? Is that what he's basically?
No, he's, he's wanting to set it up to sell it. He's not going to be the developer.
And so outside use, how much space is there? Do you recall?
The property is not too big. Let's see how many acres it is. It's about a half-acre lot, so it's quite a small lot.
Okay. Yeah, so isn't that a convenience store there on the corner?
Yes.
Okay, then what's behind the convenience store? Is that, does a convenience store property, a butt, that property is trying to sell?
So here's the house, and then there's a convenience store right here.
Okay.
So behind is just this fence, and then there's, I believe it's a multifamily just across the street from that.
Okay. Well, you know, to me, the guy's not doing anything anybody in this room would do, because if you're trying to get your best ability to sell a piece of property, and this is one of the tools that you got, I'd do the same thing, you know? Now, across the street from that, shopping center by the baseball fields.
Go back to that.
It's nothing but open outdoor storage. You got the rental places, you know, you got, it's all outdoor storage, so it's really, it's the same use kind of in that whole area right there. So I don't see any problem with what he's trying to do with it. And, you know, you're right, it's too small for a warehouse, you know, so I'll support it.
Justin, can you back that up to where you saw the building behind there? No, the, yeah, you could see the cars and the flags on the one B. Maybe it was forward.
The pictures themselves?
That one.
Okay.
My biggest concern is, see how close they are with their vehicles to the road there? When I, I drive that quite a bit, and half the time, somebody comes shooting out of there, and you can't, you can't even see it, because you can see those businesses along there have got their customer cars parked within a foot of the pavement for the service road. And you can see they've, they've filled in their land there, and that's why you've got water pooling on the other side of that red little fence there. That would be, I mean, I don't know if there's some setbacks from how far you can park cars that close to the, to the road?
They may not have originally been that close. As the road expanded, there was probably some acquisition or something that made them that tight. You can usually do cars up to the property line because it's not a structure. See, but, but traffic could have concerns about visibility.
You got kind of a strange situation there, because you've got to get up to a certain speed because the car's coming off or coming at you pretty good, too. So it's, that was my, I don't have a problem with them, what he wants to do. My concern is if we could keep the cars, because if you're driving down the road and you see that, you don't know that that third car that there's all of a sudden going to pull out, because there's no differentiation from it sitting there as a parked car versus all of a sudden showing up in front of you when you're going about thirty miles an hour.
Justin, if you pull up the map, it shows the Loop Twelve and the Chevy.
Just the aerial?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of, I guess even, one of them, I think, the place has a lot of buses that are lined up as well. I mean, so there's a lot of outside parking.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what he's up to.
And again, probably not as opposed to having it there. It'd just be nice if they could set it back a little bit so you could tell there was a certain driveway that actually people were coming out of rather than just coming out of there anywhere. But that's, I guess, one of the concerns of not knowing what's really going to be built there.
And they'll have to get, they probably have an existing driveway, but they'll have to work with Tech Start to get their full driveway access and get the permit and everything. So hopefully, they'll be looking at the visibility with those.
Mark?
Yeah, I agree with Brad. I mean, not knowing exactly what it's going to be, it's hard to conceptualize what the downsides could be. And so without having an idea of that, I wouldn't support the case.
Okay.
Okay.
On to the next one.
The next two are companion cases. The first is a comprehensive plan, twenty-four-ten Kamono, regional commercial now going to industrial. Staff recommends approval, P and Z approval, six to one, no opposition or support. So this is far east, so it's east of Loop Twelve, you know, obviously almost outside the city. So this is an area, it's, it's been kind of in transition. Obviously, there used to be some residential here. There is still one residential home. The property in question does have a home on it, but it is zoned CW. So the city's future land use is commercial currently, but as we've started to go through and look and relook at some of these areas, we realize that it's probably more realistic for it to be, at least the areas that are possibly off the frontage, to be more industrial. That's the way they're used now, and it's the way a lot of the zoning is. So staff supports changing this to industrial, and we do have this on our next list to reconsider the whole, the whole area. So the property next to them is zoned CW. The ML twenty is in one-twenty, that is the light industrial, so it's already zoned for those industrial uses, the area that it is. So again, staff finds it meets all the compatibility standards. And would you like me to go into the zoning case?
Questions? I think we're good.
The zoning case, then, they are currently R-six, single family, wanting to go to the CW Commercial Warehouse. Staff recommends approval, P and Z approval, six to one, no opposition or support. So again, it's the same property. This is about a half-acre, so it is a small lot. They want to, I think, do their construction business, so they intend to build a building with a small office and run their construction business out of this. I believe they're moving into Irving. I don't think they are in Irving currently. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we put some notes in your memo. The owner of this property commented about a water line connection and where the water meter is, and the water department's staff looked into it, and they ran, mid of last year, ran a line down Kamono, and this owner hadn't hooked up to it yet. And so they followed up with the owner, because once they start construction on this property, they will be literally building over this person's water line. So that's already been set up. The owner just needs to work with a plumber and get that tap and get that meter set. When the construction was done, they did let him know this needed to be done, so it was a reminder to him. But now, once the construction starts, we don't want to be going through his water line. So that is something I wanted to make sure y'all knew, was a comment at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Brad?
He wasn't necessarily objecting to this, though.
No, he wasn't. He just, he just wanted to make sure that the P and Z and council and staff understood that that's where his water was coming from.
Well, I can sympathize with him, but this certainly, and definitely with that topic, but, you know, him being the only resident there is kind of a little bit of a hardship, but there's, to me, you're not going to get a new residence on that property. Like, I'd be shocked if you did, so I think it's a, I think it's a good use of what they're proposing.
Any other questions?
Okay. Next two are also companions. These are on far west Northgate, fifty-fifty Northgate, from manufacturing warehouse to regional commercial, staff approval, P and Z approval, seven-zero, no opposition or support. So this, obviously, the property here to the west is DFW Airport property, which, of course, they're developing into warehouses, but this is some small commercial lots that will probably never be developed into industrial. And the site was an old car wash that the owner has converted into auto repair. The owner also owns the property next door, and so he's just wanting to also have auto sales secondary to his auto repair business. So in order to do the rezoning, he needs the future land use changed first. So that's the first request, and again, we, now that we know this is here, staff will look into this, and probably you'll see it in a future, future land use amendment list, because he's IPAR today, which is industrial, is a industrial park for airport uses, and again, he needs to be commercial in order to sell cars. And staff finds meets all the compatibility standards. And then the zoning case, if you'd like me to go into that. He's wanting to rezone to the SP-one CC to add the auto sales as an accessory use. Staff approval, P and Z approval, no opposition or support. Again, the same property. So this is the site plan. Again, it was an existing car wash, kind of one of those drive-through car washes. They closed all of the bays for auto repair, and there's a gate here. Some of the concern at P and Z was that the auto sales would get a little carried away, that they would have too many, but they really don't have that many spaces where they could do display anyway. They got, looks like maybe six, five, six spaces, something like that. So again, they just want it secondary to. I don't know if it's for cars or people who don't pay for their repairs. I'm not sure what his source is, but they have the exact same zoning on the business right next door. So this is the property. Again, he just invested to do those remodels to the west, and this is the existing property. Again, the same property owner, he does the same thing as well with the auto sales. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mark?
Al's first.
Al?
Right, so I think it's, I mean, I'm in support of the case. It's, as the applicant is saying, they're doing the same thing next door, and I also note that on the other side of the street, there's bus sales over there, I believe.
Yep.
And so, and it's, it's not going to be a used car sale, you know, lot. It's going to be, it has to be an answer they're used to the auto repair business, so I think it's okay.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
That's our last case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we've got some P and Z stuff. We're going to talk about that in executive session. Chris, we want to go back and do the website redesign?
Yes, sir. If council is wanting to move forward, let's do that, please.
And then we'll go into an executive session on a couple other items. Philip, I thought you were getting up to do it again.
Well, they all left. I must have did something wrong.
She went to get her notes.
Thank you, Fernando. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riley, Director of Communications. Very excited to present to you all some updates about the website redesign and our new CRM coming down the pike. I do want to preface before I even jump into my PowerPoint presentation that websites can be painful projects. Website redesigns can be painful. There will be pain points as we transition from our dot gov, or, excuse me, from our dot org to our dot gov URL. These are projects that do not end. Unlike building a road or a new water tower, we continuously will be touching the website. So a quick project overview. As you know, we're working on reimagining and rebuilding both of our extranet and our intranet. Council, you approved that contract back in July, and this replaces a ten-plus-year-old website. There are different goals for each of these sites, and we're really working to balance form and function. So we want to create an online experience where people see the City of Irving website as the place to go for everything Irving. It is the online resource. Balancing that form and function, we really are focusing externally on providing a site that projects Irving as a very vibrant city, a place to do business, a place to raise a family, a place to visit, a place to hold your convention or your conference. We want the interface to be very user-friendly with simple navigation and no jargon. We want it to be less governmental and more easy for people to navigate and find exactly what they're looking for. Internally, for our intranet, we really are looking to provide employees with key organizational information, key news, tools and resources that they need to do their jobs, and just what they need every day. Our intranet needs to protect, project the City of Irving as an outstanding organization to work for. We really want it to reflect our workforce, reflect our departments, and be a key resource for our employees. Each site also has unique goals and objectives. Externally, we're developing a very mobile-friendly site. We know that over sixty percent of the people visiting our current site are coming from their mobile device, so it's very important that it outlays appropriately on those go-to devices. It needs to be inclusive so that any user finds it easy to navigate. We also need to use plain language, and I will say that again, to remove that governmental jargon. Internally, we want to provide employees with access outside of the network so that regardless of where they're at in the field, they can get to our intranet. We want it to be a shared resource from our external site, so mutual news articles and calendar-sharing opportunities. They're creating more efficiencies between these two sites and to make sure every single department is represented. We're also establishing a new customer relationship management tool, or a CRM. This project is over a decade in the making. We've been looking at it since I've got We've been looking at it since I've got here. The current system is called Report a Concern. It is an online form that residents can fill out if they have an issue that they'd like to see addressed out in the community. Council approved that contract with a company called Catalyst in August, and again, it does replace our current resident inquiry system. It takes it to the next level. It's much more user-friendly for both our end users and our employees. It, again, will be accessible on mobile devices, desktops, and it will come with an app that can be downloaded. It also has additional customer service tools and interfaces with our new Avaya phone system that IT is working on rolling out. So, the overall goal in communicating these projects is to educate employees and the public about these new websites, the new CRM, and our move to the .gov domain. Internal educations for employees began in December, and externally, we began promoting in January. We've established a survey, survey back in December to get a baseline for how people feel about our, our website today, and we're going to keep that survey live as the website launches, so we have a baseline to compare our efforts with. And of course, there will be ongoing communication with our internal customer service point of contacts regarding our customer, CRM, Customer Relationship Management Tool. We were very intentional about how we wanted this new website to look and feel. As you know, we've been playing a lot with color lately, from our fun budget to play Irving. You should be seeing splashes of color all over the City of Irving. We're going to carry that forward with our new website. You can see here, we've got primary and secondary colors identified that you'll see throughout the site, and we went ahead and looked at some of the other organizations in the city to make sure that we're incorporating their color brand as well. So, you'll see Visit Irving Purple, for example. Irving Neighborhood Services Green, the ICVB Turquoise and Marygold Yellow colors, and Irving ISD colors as well. So, we're really wanting to connect Irving, the City of Irving, with the various organizations that we work very closely with. We've got cohesive branding across our extranet, our intranet, and our CRM platform. Report a Concern will remain. That's what Resident Inquiries is called today. That's what the new CRM will also call it. We're updating photography and using brand-new video elements throughout, and you're going to see a lot of dynamic elements where graphics are flipping back and forth, or maybe a YouTube logo is bouncing off the page to really draw the eye and, and be a point of interest. We're going to have a very robust Service Finder that departments across the organization have helped us create, so that a resident come in can, can easily type in the Service Finder, "I need a garage sale permit," and boom, there comes that link and it takes them right to it. We're really wanting to use the website as a tool to leverage the value of getting out and enjoying what's available in our city. So, from parks to rec centers to key business areas, restaurants, dining opportunities, the Arts Center, the Culture in Irving, we're going to be really driving people to all of these various places and services, so that they can enjoy their community. We're also going to incorporate a accessibility tool, so that if someone comes to the website and they think the font needs to be bigger, or they'd like headlines to be highlighted, that tool will help them have a more enjoyable experience. And then we're looking at a chat option, so that if you have a question for a librarian and you just want to chat with them over the website, you can do that. So, you should have seen this marketing campaign. We issued it about five weeks ago. I think we're five weeks in, Enhancing Communication One Puzzle Piece at a Time. We, again, wanted this to be very colorful and bright, and we actually used our budget graphics as kind of the base foundation for this, so it's a little bit 80s, a little bit fun. We're using puzzle pieces to symbolize various functionality, functionality pieces within the website. So, I'm going to show you a video here in a second where these puzzle pieces start coming together, and we're enhancing communication one puzzle piece at a time. So, the initial campaign lasts 10 weeks, and will run into early April. We've got ongoing micro campaigns planned and a very significant public outreach campaign through the end of the year and just moving forward. There's going to be so much involved with this site that the stories that we have to tell about it are, are literally never-ending. We're using all the tools in the toolbox to help educate the community and our workforce about the website, and we have a very robust transition plan for the .gov move. So, not only are we moving to IrvingTX.gov, but everybody's email addresses will also move to IrvingTX.gov, and of course, that survey that I mentioned earlier. So, this is a quick promotional marketing video that should have went out at about 2:00 today, and I'm thrilled for you guys to see it now. Thank you, Fernando, for your help with that. So, I want to give you a sneak peek at the homepage as it is today, and I'll go back to what you're about to see is probably not what it's going to look like when we launch the website, or from three months from now. Again, it's going to continually evolve and improve. Okay, so right off the top, you see a ribbon that can be turned on or off, and it's meant to draw your eye to important news and information. Often, we use this space for important public notices, weather events being a great example that we use it for regularly. In this case, we want people to take that survey, so we're, we're shouting out the new website, and please tell us what you think. The main menu bar is actually this bar in turquoise green right here, with Resident Services, Government, Business, and Visitors. This mirrors our site today, so we feel like we'll get a lot of user-friendly ease as people are comfortable and familiar with our website today. That's what they're going to see moving forward, but we've added a secondary menu at the top in orange here to get them to where they want to go very quickly and easily. So, if you're looking for news about the city, you want meetings, you're looking for events, you want to pay online, these are some of our most frequented pages on our website, so we're trying to make it very easy right off the top for people to get to. The Customer Relationship Management Portal, the Report a Concern, is tagged at the top here of every single page, so it's very easy for residents to click that button, and they'll get to the Report a Concern portal, which I look forward to showing you here shortly. As you can see, video is king, so we'll be swapping out this video regularly and highlighting various aspects of our community and to show how beautiful it is and how engaged our residents are. I mentioned Choose Your Adventure earlier. Here's how we're getting people out and about in our community, from aquatics to arts and culture to entertainment. You can easily get to these, these navigational pages right here from the top. So, we really want to emphasize, get out and enjoy Irving. There's so much things to do. Here's our news carousel here with the latest and greatest of news and information, and here's one of these dynamic pops I was mentioning earlier. Anytime you see a video, you're going to see this very attractive popping little YouTube logo. It makes me want to just click on that video and watch it. So, I mentioned the Service Finder earlier. That is right here. We've got some hot topics. These are some of our most frequented webpages, and that's how we've curated this content, is where are people going? That's what we want to deliver the, the most and the highest up, so they can type in keywords here and get to right where they need to go. Of course, we're promoting our wonderful city council here. We want the, the residents to know about the meeting schedules. Here's the calendar of events, so really promoting the, the date, the type of event. Lots of engaging imagery. This is actually an Irving father and daughter at an event, so our residents may see themselves on our website from time to time. We really want to shout out all the successes Irving has, so here's our by-the-numbers. As I hover over these different tiles, they're going to flip over and give you a little bit more information, and you may be able to read more at these links here. And then, of course, back to video. We're very aggressive with the video content we put on YouTube, so the latest and greatest videos are going to be featured here at the bottom. We want people to stay connected with the city, so sign up for news and alerts here. They will hit your inbox. And then here's the footer of our website. So, that is a quick preview of the website. Now, let me take you to the Report a Concern portal. That's what the landing page looks like if they were to come to it on a desktop or maybe a tablet. So, this is what it opens up as. As you can see, we're really promoting that mobile app here. You can download it on both the Google App Store as well as the Apple App Store. A lot of people are looking for online payments. They want to make a payment easily, so this takes them straight to a page where they can pay their utility bill, or maybe their municipal court fine. Here's Report a Concern. So, they'll jump in here, and you've got three tabs here, Details, Location, and Contact Info. If a resident chooses to create an account here, it's going to make it very easy for them to log back in and follow along of where their concern is being handled by the city. So, it'll have step-by-step updates from staff on where we're at. One of our most frequent types of issues that we get are high grass and weeds. That's what the city calls high grass and weeds. But as a resident, maybe I'm thinking my neighbor has tall grass. I'm going to type in tall grass here. So, we've made it very predictive, where we've added keywords to what we're calling high grass and weeds. It's going to pop up right here, just because I've got that keyword tall plugged in. So, it wants me to, to describe it. I'm just going to say tall. I can upload up to five photos or videos of whatever issue that I'd like the city to look at, and then I click Next. Now, it's asking for my location, so I can enter an exact location. I can ask it to use my current location, or I can drop this fun little pin anywhere I want, or wherever that concern is, I should say, and let's just say it's right here. I should also point out that it's going to push knowledge-based articles to you. The system knows what you're looking at, what you're looking for, and there might be an easy answer right here in the knowledge-based article section, so we're hoping that people really leverage that, and that may reduce the number of inquiries, inquiries we get, because we've provided them with the knowledge base. So, our current system does require that they fill out these fields that you see here. We're really wanting to engage and interact and keep the residents updated on what they're submitting to the city, so they would fill in their first name, last name, email address, and phone number. Let us know if they would like to be followed up on, on their issue, and then it would create the request. From there, it triggers into the backend of the city and workflows into the various project management tools that the city has in place, or we've got several departments who are actually going to manage these projects through the Catalyst CRM system. So, that is how you can easily report a concern through our CRM. Here's a look at the mobile app. Again, it's on Apple and Android, makes reporting on the go a breeze. You have this Report a Concern icon right here at the top left. That is the primary function of the app. However, we want to get the most use out of this space and really make it useful for residents, so they can also pay online payments, go to animal services, look up their waste collection schedule. We, we've got permits and inspections, library services, meeting and events, and of course, a link that takes them back to the city website. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
John, does that all make sense?
Yeah, it all makes sense. I, I'm pretty excited about this. I really enjoyed that sneak preview of the homepage. Definitely, it's using a lot of best practices and modern practices in UI and UX development, so I'm very happy to see that. One thing I did, did want to ask about, I don't need a demonstration or anything, but one major area of focus that we had talked about when we were approving the bid was the search functionality and particularly faceting. Is that coming together?
Yeah, so part of that Service Request Finder is departments implement or pulling together every single service that they provide, providing a definition for that service and where they need to go to get that service. So, not only do we have a search function at the top through Google, we also have the elevated Service Finder function.
And then the other thing that was pretty high on the list as well is SEO optimization. How's that coming?
We're going to be plugging along with SEO optimization. That's very important. Everything, and especially since we're using that accessibility tool, everything is going to be tagged and keyworded to help improve with that SEO.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Kyle?
Translatable?
Very, yes. We're using Google Translate, and the user, the accessibility tool also has a translate function. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? We're good to go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kayo, we've got a couple things for executive session. You want to read it?
Yes, Mayor. The time is 5:09. The Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session. This is on several things. It's to receive legal advice pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. There are a couple of items on the agenda, Items 5, 12, and 14. One is for legal advice. The other two are personnel items pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, whether it shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes. Go into the breach as March 7th through the 22nd at Dupree Theater at the Irving Art Center. March 9th is Second Sunday Funday at the Irving Art Center with the theme Playing With Patterns. Experience this free event to create quilt-inspired art led by members of the Irving Quilt Guild. Work in America is a photography exhibition featuring immigrants and first-generation Americans at work at small skilled trades. Explore the portraits and interviews at the Irving Archives and Museum through May 25th.
With a real-time crime center, this is the next step in law enforcement.
It's been a game changer for the way that our officers in the street are responding to calls and the awareness we're able to give them ahead of time.
And it'll have some great new accessibility features, Service Finder features, and search functions. That's going to make it really easy to communicate with the City of Irving.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex.
The earlier that we're able to detect these runway drivers, the more likelihood that we can do something to either stop or alert drivers.
The expansion project's going to allow us to connect all our city facilities, as well as position the city for some possible future private-public partnerships. I don't think there's a whole lot of cities doing that.
Look, this is, this is my house.
It's just exciting to me, because you see everybody coming together.
So, you start to build that community, that camaraderie, that relationship, that friendship, just to make your community better, and it's the right way to do this, and we did this right.
A lot of places don't have a mobile kitchen. The library tries to be ahead to pick up trends that will really benefit our patrons.
We're launching a customer relationship management portal that's going to make it super easy to report issues to the city. Whether you're on the go and you're seeing something out in the community that you need to report, or you're behind your desktop, reporting things to the city is going to be a breeze.
It's a sticky mess, just a big sticky mess.
We wanted to do something different. Let's bring the convention center in this. Let's showcase what we can do here.
We want them to be just as thrilled to see the size of a moon pie sitting there and have some real fun with it.
I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we go under the sea with a performance of The Little Mermaid Jr., presented by the Irving Youth Theater, and we learn about a new sandwich shop in the city that's offering a variety of handcrafted subs and authentic cheesesteaks. So, tune in for the February 21st episode on ICT Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
We fold them in just like this.
Crafts created for canines and kitties.
And then we'll cut a small, like, triangle right here, so the cat has access to it, so they can kind of entertain themselves.
Members of the business community are working alongside other volunteers at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
I love to do because I love dogs.
They are creating enrichment activities for the adoptable animals here.
It helps them have something to do. It's obviously boring to sit in one place, so we give them an activity. It helps mentally stimulate them, and overall, it helps their quality of life.
Something as simple as a cardboard egg carton can become fun.
For the egg carton, we actually fill with treats, put some newspaper in there, and let the dogs kind of use their brain to open the egg carton.
Let's see what Rose thinks.
You give them a package, and now they're quiet, they're interested, their tails are up, their tails are wagging, and you get to see the immediate reward.
And here is evergreen. This enrichment is especially important right now, because an expansion of the Animal Care Campus is underway, and the construction is limiting space for dogs to play outside. When it's complete, the expansion will benefit just about every function of Irving Animal Services.
I'm so excited to see the outcome of this.
Enhancing pet health with more space for isolation.
So, if an animal...
So if an animal comes with like an upper respiratory infection, they can isolate a large dog in that area.
And expanded veterinary facilities are among the priorities.
Clearly, this is a busy space. Y'all need the room.
Oh, 100%. We have so many animals coming in and out of the shelter. We try to get as many ready for the adoption process, which is, you know, spaying and neutering.
But for now, that does mean construction, and dogs are taking notice.
And sometimes with the noises, they're going to be a little bit more nervous or cautious or scared, or they will start barking more.
With the work expected to last for a while.
How's it going?
Donations of items and time make an impact.
We really appreciate when volunteers can come in and help. It's a huge thing to be able to give our animals enrichment while they're kind of hanging out waiting for their forever home.
Volunteers and construction teams, all working with the same goal of helping animals
We would like to welcome you all to the ribbon-cutting celebration at Lenny's Grill and Subs.
One, two, three, hot sauce!
We serve delicious Philly cheese steaks, and we also serve many variety of deli subs, from our Italian to our American club to our turkey sandwiches. We also have our hot sandwiches. We have a hot Italian, we have a meatball, and we also have a chicken deli. We definitely serve mac and cheese, and it's a really new item on our menu, and it's a delicious item.
It's always nice to have something new come in. Irving, Los Angeles is so special in that we have so many diverse people in town, and so we have lots of fabulous restaurants. And so I just say the more the merrier.
We have our first restaurant in Grapevine. That restaurant has been there for five years. We opened that location up in 2019, a little bit before the COVID shutdown. And so we looked at this location several times, and we just wanted, fell in love with this location, and so we decided to put our second restaurant here. We make everything fresh to order, fresh ingredients, fresh meat. Nothing is pre-made. I always tell everybody, we make all our sandwiches with love.
Celebrate the arrival of spring with the festival of all ages. Holly Fest takes place here at the West Irving Library, Monday, March 10th at 2:30 PM. Wearing white is highly recommended as guests will be given colored powder to toss at each other, and chalk will be provided to draw rongoli designs. Christine de Clario's La Novia Tour is coming to Irving. Experience her powerful voice, inspiring story, and soul-stirring tracks. This happens at the Pavilion at Toyota Music Factory, March 14th at 8:00 PM. Unleash your creativity at the Stamp and Scrapbook Expo. Whether you're a beginner or seasoned pro, explore workshops designed to inspire and elevate your crafting skill. This all happens here at the Irving Convention Center Friday and Saturday, March 21st and 22nd.
The City of Irving has a wrong-way driver detection system, and cameras have caught some very close calls. Take a look at the car we circled and read as it turns the wrong way and narrowly avoids a collision. The cameras are located on frontage roads along state highways 183 and 161. When they detect a wrong-way driver, the system will send an alert to police. The goal is to stop violators before they get on the ramps and on the highways. These clips are just a few examples. The system has caught more than 100 wrong-way drivers so far.
And I think Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex. Although it had been done by Texas dot and NTTA, it hadn't been done at the local level. And the key thing is it's trying to address a bad behavior as it starts.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong-way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers coming down the road so that they realize there's someone going the wrong way. So they're not going to have that high-speed head-to-head collision.
Grant money from the North Central Texas Council of Governments paid for the system.
We appreciate each and every one of you taking the time out of your Sunday schedule to spend with us for just one hour to celebrate and honor Black History Month.
Irving Black Arts Council President Lenita Johnson organizes the Black History Month Celebration every year.
And Laura's voice is still ringing in mine, still dancing in the jazz of my memory.
It's a program that means a great deal to the community and to her.
It honors my mom and dad. We grew up seeing Black history in my home. And my parents thought it was important, not only for us, but my neighbors, because not all my neighbors was Black. So they thought it was important to share that.
She shares this celebration once again at the Irving Arts Center with a moving dance. Special presentations from Irving ISD students, including a Langston Hughes poem read by DiMario Jones.
I live here too. I want freedom just as you, democracy.
And performer Janet Forni shares stories and poetry of literary icons.
We're putting on a production that entails Black history from the Cujo Lewis story to our guest today, which will be Mr. and Mrs. Martin, Ms. Irma P. Hall. We'll tell her story. I'll read some of her poetry.
It is their story that teaches us the power of connection, the power of hope and love.
It became important for me to let their voices to continue to be heard. And that's the whole premises for today, is that the voices are still heard.
The Black History Month Celebration brings the community together to learn about a significant moment in time while encouraging us to look at our own past.
If you don't know your history, you don't know yourself.
Which is why the program hopes to inspire future generations through this compelling showcase.
Every year is a new generation and a new chance and a new opportunity to sing, dance, honor, and say it all over again.
On behalf of the Irving Black Arts Council, thank each and every one of you for being here to celebrate with us. We will see you guys right back here next year.
Well, I believe this spot has the opportunity for us to really take Irving to the next level. Looking over here and looking behind you, you're going to see massive development. You're going to see this investment pay off.
We have been waiting a long time for this. The way it's come out has just been more than expected. It's turned out beautifully.
And I even think traffic being slowed down has been a benefit to us.
Now that it's over, we're just excited to continue to redevelop downtown. You know, we're replacing a 50-year-old facility, so it's more energy efficient. This serves West Irving primarily.
This area has grown tremendously in the last 30, 40 years. It is a very vital investment.
We've now got over 80 miles of road that have been overlaid and reconditioned in the city of Irving. We're looking and paying attention to just not the road condition underground, but also the rideability of the road.
We have done the first phase, which was from North Gate to Byron Nelson Way. That is completed. We are now working on the piece between Metter and North Gate. No question, it'll be a smoother ride, absolutely safer.
So we have an existing tank on Esters just north of 183. Due to the growth that we've seen through the years, it needs to be bigger. So we'll be taking down this facility and putting a brand-new, 2.5 million gallon storage tank in its place.
I think one of the neatest things about this project is we've worked diligently to get federal funding for this, and about 50% of this project is federally funded.
The North Texas Teen Book Festival is our annual festival featuring young adult and middle-grade authors. We usually bring about 70 to 75 authors every year. This year, we will have about 40-something panel discussions with authors. We'll have two keynote addresses, one in the morning for middle grade and one in the afternoon for young adult. We'll have book giveaways all day, and at the end of the day, authors will stay and they will sign your books for you. Four of our authors will have their signing lines ticketed, and you can get those tickets at 7:45 in the morning. So get there early if you want to have your books signed by these four authors, Aralstein, Alan Gratz, and Rachel Renee and Nikki Russell. It is a free festival. You'll be able to see over 70 authors, and we're talking big-name authors, all for free. And it's just a wonderful day for young and old alike to enjoy literature.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next edition of City Source, see a milestone moment as Irving elevates aquatics and recreation. We will show you the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new indoor pool at Center Park Recreation Center. And it's the latest event in the Irving Marathon Running Series, Love on the Run. We'll cover that and preview the big change coming to this year's Irving Marathon. That's starting February 28th at 6:00 PM on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
My lovely snowman.
For Rebecca Charles, there's no fun quite like snow fun.
I was demolishing my friend and my sister. I was just shoving as much snow as I could and throwing it at them.
Irving Parks and Recreation's annual Frost Fest welcomes visitors both small and tall to leave the event plaza for polar chills and thrills.
You get the smiles, but the little screeches, the little yells. For us, it doesn't seem too high to them. It seems like they're coming down an Empire State Building.
To really appreciate winter, you have to be able to touch it. And at Frost Fest, you get to enjoy that wintry touch.
I got to grab a big chunk of snow and throw it at my sister.
While there's plenty of Arctic entertainment for kids of all ages, and the Snow Tube Hills remain a popular attraction.
It was fast and pretty tall.
For Rebecca, it's tough to top a good old-fashioned snowball fight.
Was it more fun than getting hit in the face with a snowball?
Because there's nothing quite like that frosty touch of winter. Robert Cheek for Irving Spotlight.
I just don't see how the world thinks such wonderful things could be so bad. Look at this stuff. Isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm the girl, the girl who has everything?
We are presenting Irving Youth Theater's version of The Little Mermaid Jr.
You'll never guess what I found today. Look, have you ever seen something so wonderful in your whole entire life? What is it? I'm not sure.
The story is about a young lady who dreams of being in a different place. She really wants to be where the humans are, and she falls in love with a prince that she sees from afar, but she can't be with him unless she becomes a human herself. And so it's that story of her journey for true love.
I don't hear a heartbeat. Wait. He's breathing. Look at him. He's so beautiful.
I've loved this movie since I was like five years old. I feel like it's just exciting because I get to look at like the little girl to me and be like, hey, we did it.
I've always dreamed as a kid of like being on stage, being in a movie, like just doing all that stuff, so it really feels like a dream come true. I'm looking forward to seeing all those kids in the stands, like smiling and like just feeling the really magic of Irving Youth Theater.
The directors, they did like a really great job helping us.
Mr. and Dr. Hill are so kind. They're just awesome.
We love what theater does to help kids.
It made me feel more welcome, more loved, more just like I'm meant to be.
I wasn't always this like confident. It really helped me like become confident in front of an audience. And now I'm like, I'm not nervous at all to like say something in front of anybody.
Now, all that voice to the end of the year, we have to.
I like Captain.
It's so much more than what's on the stage because it's important to be a great character on stage, but it's even more important to have great character in real life. And so that's what we believe theater does, and the joy of the audience of seeing a show. And theater just brings people together and fills people with joy. So for us, it's a true labor of love. We're just so proud of the work that the kids have done and that the families do to help bring the show together.
The weather is something less than lovely for Love on the Run. Even so, hundreds of people are at the Toyota Music Factory, ready to bear the conditions and go. This half marathon is the first race of the year in the Irving Marathon Running Series. In the utter cold, runners also take on a 10K and 5K. Given the theme of this run, we wanted to know what people love about running.
So many things. It's a stress reliever. People, the community.
I think it's just so amazing to like push yourself towards something and like accomplish it.
Next up is the biggest event of the year, the Irving Marathon. Look at last year's turnout.
In 2024, we had our biggest growth that we've seen. It was about a 45% growth from the previous year, and we had about 4,200 people.
Because of that growth trend, this year, the Irving Marathon will be a two-day event, March 29th and 30th.
With the 5K and 10K being on Saturday, and the half marathon and marathon being on Sunday.
Race Director Lazaro Alvarez says a lot of factors are coming together to make this the time for more growth. Improvements are complete on the plaza at the Toyota Music Factory, and the marathon is building more of a name for itself, moving up in national marathon rankings.
And everything is kind of working out, right?
This race continues to be a qualifying event for the prestigious Boston Marathon.
It starts to attract a lot of people from out of town. So definitely at each event, we have between 10 to 15 different countries signed up.
And a two-day event provides an opportunity for the Irving Marathon to build business because runners have incentive to sign up for both days.
Get an extra medal and an extra Irving Marathon jacket for doing the Irving Marathon two-day challenge, whether you're on the 5K maybe on Saturday, and then the marathon or half marathon on Sunday.
The event's expansion is also giving a chance to boost the benefit to local students by raising more money for scholarships through the Irving Schools Foundation.
Our goal at the Irving Marathon in March is to raise at least $10,000. That would fund at least one $1,000 scholarships for 10 students.
Back here at Love on the Run.
I love the incremental progress, getting better, running longer.
You keep accomplishing things. You keep going a little bit further and believing that you can go a little bit further than that, and it just, it keeps you coming back.
Finishing with a struggle or with a smile, all runners have reason to celebrate.
I already did turkey trot, and then I did whip cross, and then Lord of the Run has been so addicting because the energy's so nice. People are amazing here. That's what makes us come back.
It is clear their heart is in this at Love on the Run.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, whether it shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes. Going to the Breachers March 7th through the 22nd at Dupree Theater at the Irving Arts Center. March 9th is Second Sunday Funday at the Irving Arts Center with the theme Playing With Patterns. Experience this free event to create quilt-inspired art led by members of the Irving Quilt Guild. Work in America is a photography exhibition featuring immigrants and first-generation Americans at work at small skilled trades. Explore the portraits and interviews at the Urban Archives and Museum through May 25th.
With a real-time crime center, this is the next step in law enforcement.
It's been a game changer for the way that our officers in the street are responding to calls and the awareness we're able to give them ahead of time.
It'll have some great new accessibility features, service finder features, and search functions that's going to make it really easy to communicate with the City of Irving.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers.
The expansion project is going to allow us to connect all our city facilities as well as position the city for some possible future private public partnerships. I don't think there's a whole lot of cities doing that.
Look, this is, this is my house.
It's just exciting to me because you see everybody coming together.
So you start to build that community, that camaraderie, that relationship, that friendship, just to make your community better. And it's the right way to do this and we did this right.
A lot of places don't have a mobile kitchen. The library tries to be ahead to pick up trends that will really benefit our patrons.
We're launching a customer relationship management portal that's going to make it super easy to report issues to the city. Whether you're on the go and you're seeing something out in the community that you need to report or you're behind your desktop, reporting things to the city is going to be a breeze.
It's a sticky mess, just a big sticky mess.
We wanted to do something different. Let's bring the convention center in this. Let's showcase what we can do here.
We want them to be just as thrilled to see the size of a moon pie sitting there and have some real fun with it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we go under the sea with a performance of The Little Mermaid Jr., presented by the Irving Youth Theater. And we learn about a new sandwich shop in the city that's offering a variety of handcrafted subs and authentic cheese steaks. So tune in for the February 21st episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at the City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture and entertainment.
We fold them in just like this.
Crafts created for canines and kitties.
And then we'll cut a small like triangle right here so the cat has access to it so they can kind of entertain themselves.
Members of the business community are working alongside other volunteers at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
I love to do because I love dogs.
They are creating enrichment activities for the adoptable animals here.
It helps them have something to do. It's obviously boring to sit in one place. So we give them an activity. It helps mentally stimulate them and overall it helps their quality of life.
Something as simple as a cardboard egg carton can become fun.
So the egg carton, we actually fill with treats, put some newspaper in there and let the dogs kind of use their brain to open the egg carton.
Let's see what Rose thinks.
You give them a package and now they're quiet, they're interested, their tails are up, their tails are wagging and you get to see the immediate reward.
And here is evergreen. This enrichment is especially important right now because an expansion of the Animal Care Campus is underway and the construction is limiting space for dogs to play outside. When it's complete, the expansion will benefit just about every function of Irving Animal Services.
I'm so excited to see the outcome of this.
Enhancing pet health with more space for isolation.
So if an animal comes with like an upper respiratory infection, they can isolate a large dog in that area.
And expanded veterinary facilities are among the priorities.
Clearly this is a busy space. You don't need the room.
Oh, 100%. We have so many animals coming in and out of the shelter. We try to get as many ready for the adoption process, which is, you know, spaying and neutering.
But for now, that does mean construction and dogs are taking notice.
And sometimes with the noises, they're going to be a little bit more nervous or cautious or scared or they will start barking more.
With the work expected to last for a while.
How's it going? Okay.
Donations of items and time make an impact.
We really appreciate when volunteers can come in and help. It's a huge thing to be able to give our animals enrichment while they're kind of hanging out waiting for their forever home.
Volunteers and construction teams, all working with the same goal of helping animals
We would like to welcome you all to the ribbon cutting celebration at Lenny's Grill
We serve delicious Philly cheese steaks and we also serve many variety of deli subs from our Italian to our American club to our turkey sandwiches. We also have our hot sandwiches. We have a hot Italian, we have a meatball, and we also have a chicken deli. We definitely serve mac and cheese. It is really new item on our menu and it's a delicious item.
It's always nice to have something new come in. Irving, Los Angeles is so special in that we have so many diverse people in town. And so we have lots of fabulous restaurants. And so I just say the more the merrier.
We have our first restaurant in Grapevine. That restaurant has been there for five years and we opened that location up in 2019, a little bit before the COVID shutdown. And so we looked at this location several times and we just wanted, fell in love with this location. And so we decided to put our second restaurant here. We make everything fresh to order, area fresh ingredients, fresh meat. Nothing is pre-made.
Celebrate the arrival of spring with the festival of all ages. Holly Fest takes place here at the West Irving Library, Monday, March 10th at 2:30 PM. Wearing white is highly recommended as guests will be given colored powder to toss at each other and chalk will be provided to draw Rongoli designs. Christine de Clario's La Novia Tour is coming to Irving. Experience her powerful voice, inspiring story and soul stirring tracks. This happens at the Pavilion at Toyota Music Factory, March 14th at 8:00 PM. Unleash your creativity at the Stamp and Scrapbook Expo. Whether you're a beginner or seasoned pro, explore workshops designed to inspire and elevate your crafting skill. This all happens here at the Irving Convention Center, Friday and Saturday, March 21st and 22nd.
The city of Irving has a wrong way driver detection system and cameras have caught some very close calls. Take a look at the car we circled and read as it turns the wrong way and narrowly avoids a collision. The cameras are located on frontage roads along state highways 183 and 161. When they detect a wrong way driver, the system will send an alert to police. The goal is to stop violators before they get on the ramps and on the highways. These clips are just a few examples. The system has caught more than 100 wrong way drivers so far.
And I think Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex. Although it had been done by Texas dot and NTTA, it hadn't been done at the local level. And the key thing is it's trying to address a bad behavior as it starts.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers coming down the road so that they realize there's someone going the wrong way. So they're not going to have that high speed head to head collision.
Grant money from the North Central Texas Council of Governments paid for the system.
We appreciate each and every one of you taking the time out of your Sunday schedule to spend with us for just one hour to celebrate and honor Black History Month.
Irving Black Arts Council President Lenita Johnson organizes the Black History Month Celebration every year.
And Zora's voice is still ringing in my, still dancing in the jazz of my memory.
It's a program that means a great deal to the community and to her.
It honors my mom and dad. We grew up seeing black history in my home. And my parents thought it was important, not only for us, but my neighbors, because not all my neighbors was black. So they thought it was important to share that.
She shares this celebration once again at the Irving Arts Center with a moving dance. Special presentations from Irving ISD students, including a Langston Hughes poem read by Demario Jones.
I live here too. I want freedom just as you, democracy.
And performer Janet Forni shares stories and poetry of literary icons.
We're putting on a production that entails black history from the Cujo Lewis story to our guest today, which will be Mr. and Mrs. Martin, Ms. Irma P. Hall. We'll tell her story. I'll read some of her poetry.
It is their story that teaches us the power of connection, the power of hope and love.
It became important for me to let their voices to continue to be heard. And that's the whole premises for today is that the voices are still heard.
The Black History Month Celebration brings the community together to learn about a significant moment in time while encouraging us to look at our own past.
If you don't know your history, you don't know yourself.
Which is why the program hopes to inspire future generations through this compelling showcase.
Every year is a new generation and a new chance and a new opportunity to sing, dance, honor, and say it all over again.
On behalf of the Urban Black Arts Council, thank each and every one of you for being here to celebrate with us. We will see you guys right back here next year.
I believe this spot has the opportunity for us to really take Irving to the next level. Looking over here and looking behind you, you're going to see massive development. You're going to see this investment pay off.
We have been waiting a long time for this. The way it's come out has just been more than expected. It's turned out beautifully.
And I even think traffic being slowed down has been a benefit to us.
Now that it's over, we're just excited to continue to redevelop downtown.
You know, we're replacing a 50 year old facility, so it's more energy efficient. This serves West Irving primarily.
This area has grown tremendously in last 30, 40 years. It is a very vital investment.
We've now got over 80 miles of road that have been overlaid and reconditioned in the city of Irving. We're looking and paying attention to just not the road condition underground, but also the rideability of the road.
We have done the first phase, which was from North Gate to Byron Nelson Way. That is completed. We are now working on the piece between Metter and North Gate. No question, it'll be a smoother ride, absolutely safer.
So we have an existing tank on Esters just north of 183. Due to the growth that we've seen through the years, it needs to be bigger. So we'll be taking down this facility and putting a brand new two and a half million gallon storage tank in its place.
I think one of the neatest things about this project is we've worked diligently to get federal funding for this and about 50% of this project is federally funded.
The North Texas Teen Book Festival is our annual festival featuring young adult and middle grade authors. We usually bring about 70 to 75 authors every year. This year, we will have about 40 something panel discussions with authors. We'll have two keynote addresses, one in the morning for middle grade and one in the afternoon for young adult. We'll have book giveaways all day and at the end of the day, authors will stay and they will sign your books for you. Four of our authors will have their signing lines ticketed and you can get those tickets at 7:45 in the morning. So get there early if you want to have your books signed by these four authors, Arlstein, Alan Gratz, and Rachel Renee and Nikki Russell. It is a free festival. You'll be able to see over 70 authors and we're talking big name authors, all for free. And it's just a wonderful day for young and old alike to enjoy literature.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next edition of City Source, see a milestone moment as Irving elevates aquatics and recreation. We will show you the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new indoor pool at Center Park Recreation Center. And it's the latest event in the Irving Marathon Running Series, Love on the Run. We'll cover that and preview the big change coming to this year's Irving Marathon. That's starting February 28th at 6:00 PM on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16 and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/the city of Irving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
My lovely snowman.
For Rebecca Charles, there's no fun quite like snow fun.
I was demolishing my friend and my sister. I was just shoving as much of snow as I could and throwing it at them.
Irving Parks and Recreation's annual Frost Fest welcomes visitors both small and tall to leave the event plaza for polar chills and thrills.
You get the smiles, but the little screeches, the little yells. For us, it doesn't seem too high to them. It seems like they're coming down an Empire State Building.
To really appreciate winter, you have to be able to touch it. And at Frost Fest, you get to enjoy that wintry touch.
I got to grab a big chunk of snow and throw it at my sister.
While there's plenty of Arctic entertainment for kids of all ages, and the snow tube hills remain a popular attraction.
It was fast and pretty tall.
For Rebecca, it's tough to top a good old fashioned snowball fight.
Was it more fun than getting hit in the face with a snowball?
Because there's nothing quite like that frosty touch of winter. Robert Sheek for Irving Spotlight.
I just don't see how the world thinks such wonderful things could be so bad. Look at this stuff. Isn't it neat? Wouldn't you think my collection's complete? Wouldn't you think I'm the girl, the girl who has everything?
We are presenting Irving Youth Theater's version of The Little Mermaid Jr.
You'll never guess what I found today. Look, have you ever seen something so wonderful in your whole entire life?
What is it? I'm not sure.
The story is about a young lady who dreams of being in a different place. She really wants to be where the humans are and she falls in love with a prince that she sees from afar, but she can't be with him unless she becomes a human herself. And so it's that story of her journey for true love.
Oh, I don't hear a heartbeat. Wait. He's breathing. Look at him. He's so beautiful.
I've loved this movie since I was like five years old. I feel like it's just exciting because I get to look at like the little girl to me and be like, hey, we did it.
I've always dreamed as a kid of like being on stage, being in a movie, like just doing all that stuff. So it really feels like a dream come true. I'm looking forward to seeing all those kids in the stands like smiling and like just feeling the really magic of Irving Youth Theater.
The directors, they did like a really great job helping us.
Mr. and Dr. Hill are so kind. They're just awesome.
We love what theater does to help kids.
It made me feel more welcome, more loved, more just like I'm meant to be.
I wasn't always this like confident. It really helped me like become confident in front of an audience. And now I'm like, I'm not nervous at all to like say something in front of anybody.
Now, call that voice to the end of the year if we have to.
I like Captain.
It's so much more than what's on the stage because it's important to be a great character on stage, but it's even more important to have great character in real life. And so that's what we believe theater does and the joy of the audience of seeing a show and theater just brings people together and fills people with joy. So for us, it's a true labor of love. We're just so proud of the work that the kids have done and that the families do to help bring the show together.
The weather is something less than lovely for Love on the Run. Even so, hundreds of people are at the Toyota Music Factory, ready to bear the conditions and go. This half marathon is the first race of the year in the Irving Marathon Running Series. In the utter cold, runners also take on a 10K and 5K. Given the theme of this run, we wanted to know what people love about running.
So many things. It's a stress reliever.
People, the community.
I think it's just so amazing to like push yourself towards something and like accomplish it.
Next up is the biggest event of the year, the Irving Marathon. Look at last year's turnout.
In 2024, we had our biggest growth that we've seen. It was about a 45% growth from the previous year and we had about 4,200 people.
Because of that growth trend, this year, the Irving Marathon will be a two-day event, March 29th and 30th.
With the 5K and 10K being on Saturday, and the half marathon and marathon being on Sunday.
Race Director Lazaro Alvarez says a lot of factors are coming together to make this the time for more growth. Improvements are complete on the plaza at the Toyota Music Factory, and the marathon is building more of a name for itself, moving up in national marathon rankings.
And everything is kind of working out, right?
This race continues to be a qualifying event for the prestigious Boston Marathon.
It starts to attract a lot of people from out of town. So definitely at each event, we have between 10 to 15 different countries signed up.
And a two-day event provides an opportunity for the Irving Marathon to build business because runners have incentive to sign up for both days.
Get an extra medal and an extra Irving Marathon jacket for doing the Irving Marathon two-day challenge where they run the 5K maybe on Saturday, and then the marathon or half marathon on Sunday.
The event's expansion is also giving a chance to boost the benefit to local students by raising more money for scholarships through the Irving Schools Foundation.
Our goal at the Irving Marathon in March is to raise at least $10,000. That would fund at least one $1,000 scholarship for 10 students.
Back here at Love on the Run.
I love the incremental progress, getting better, running longer.
You keep accomplishing things. You keep going a little bit further and believing that you can go a little bit further than that. And it just, it keeps you coming back.
Finishing with a struggle or with a smile, all runners have reason to celebrate.
I'm already doing turkey trot, and then I did wick cross. I mean, Love on the Run has been so addicting because the energy is so nice. People are amazing here. That is what makes us come back.
It is clear their heart is in this at Love on the Run.
It's the first all-female production of Shakespeare's Henry V, where there shall be a victory in the battle for equality or a target for tomatoes. Go into the breach as March 7th through the 22nd at Dupree Theater at the Irving Arts Center. March 9th is second Sunday Fun Day at the Irving Arts Center with the theme Playing With Patterns. Experience this free event to create quilt-inspired art led by members of the Irving Quilt Guild. Work in America is a photography exhibition featuring immigrants and first-generation Americans at work at small skilled trades. Explore the portraits and interviews at the Urban Archives and Museum through May 25th.
With the Real Time Crime Center, this is the next step in law enforcement.
It's been a game changer for the way that our officers in the street are responding to calls and the awareness we're able to give them ahead of time.
And it'll have some great new accessibility features, service finder features, and search functions. That's going to make it really easy to communicate with the city of Irving.
Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong-way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers.
The expansion project's going to allow us to connect all our city facilities as well as position the city for some possible future private-public partnerships. I don't think there's a whole lot of cities doing that.
Look, this is, this is my house.
It's just exciting to me because you see everybody coming together.
So you start to build that community, that camaraderie, that relationship, that friendship, just to make your community better. And it's the right way to do this, and we did this right.
A lot of places don't have a mobile kitchen. The library tries to be ahead to pick up trends that will really benefit our patrons.
We're launching a customer relationship management portal that's going to make it super easy to report issues to the city. Whether you're on the go and you're seeing something out in the community that you need to report, or you're behind your desktop, reporting things to the city is going to be a breeze.
It's a sticky mess, just a big sticky mess.
We wanted to do something different. Let's bring the convention center in this. Let's showcase what we can do here.
We want them to be just as thrilled to see the size of a moon pie sitting there and have some real fun with it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we go under the sea with a performance of The Little Mermaid Jr., presented by the Irving Youth Theater. And we learn about a new sandwich shop in the city that's offering a variety of handcrafted subs and authentic cheese steaks. So tune in for the February 21st episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
We fold them in just like this.
Crafts created for canines and kitties.
And then we'll cut a small like triangle right here so the cat has access to it so they can kind of entertain themselves a little bit.
Members of the business community are working alongside other volunteers at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
I love to do because I love dogs.
They are creating enrichment activities for the adoptable animals here.
It helps them have something to do. It's obviously boring to sit in one place. So we give them an activity. It helps mentally stimulate them. And overall, it helps their quality of life.
Something as simple as a cardboard egg carton can become fun.
For the egg carton, we actually fill with treats, put some newspaper in there, and let the dogs kind of use their brain to open the egg carton.
Let's see what Rose thinks.
You give them a package, and now they're quiet. They're interested. Their tails are up. Their tails are wagging. And you get to see the immediate reward.
And here is Evergreen. This enrichment is especially important right now because an expansion of the Animal Care Campus is underway, and the construction is limiting space for dogs to play outside. When it's complete, the expansion will benefit just about every function of Irving Animal Services.
I'm so excited to see the outcome of this.
Enhancing pet health with more space for isolation.
So if an animal comes with like an upper respiratory infection, they can isolate a large dog in that area.
And expanded veterinary facilities are among the priorities.
Clearly, this is a busy space. You don't need the room.
Oh, 100%. We have so many animals coming in and out of the shelter. We try to get as many ready for the adoption process, which is, you know, spaying and neutering.
But for now, that does mean construction, and dogs are taking notice.
And sometimes with the noises, they're going to be a little bit more nervous or cautious or scared, or they will start barking more.
With the work expected to last for a while.
How's it going?
Donations of items and time make an impact.
We really appreciate when volunteers can come in and help. It's a huge thing to be able to give our animals enrichment while they're kind of hanging out waiting for their forever home.
Volunteers and construction teams all working with the same goal of helping animals in Irving.
We would like to welcome you all to the ribbon cutting celebration at Lenny's Grill and Subs.
We serve delicious Philly cheese steaks, and we also serve many variety of deli subs from our Italian to our American club to our turkey sandwiches.
White bread, too.
And turkey. We also have our hot sandwiches. We have a hot Italian. We have a meatball, and we also have a chicken deli. We definitely serve mac and cheese. It is a really new item on our menu, and it's a delicious item.
It's always nice to have something new come in. Irving, Los Angeles is so special in that we have so many diverse people in town. And so we have lots of fabulous restaurants. And so I just say the more the merrier.
We have our first restaurant in Grapevine. That restaurant has been there for five years. And we opened that location up in 2019, a little bit before the COVID shutdown. And so we looked at this location several times, and we just wanted, fell in love with this location. And so we decided to put our second restaurant here. We make everything fresh to order, area, fresh ingredients, fresh meat. Nothing is pre-made. I always tell everybody, we make all our sandwiches with love.
Celebrate the arrival of spring with a festival of all ages. Holly Fest takes place here at the West Irving Library, Monday, March 10th at 2:30 p.m. Wearing white is highly recommended as guests will be given colored powder to toss at each other, and chalk will be provided to draw Rongoli designs. Christine de Clario's La Novia Tour is coming to Irving. Experience her powerful voice, inspiring story, and soul-stirring tracks. This happens at the Pavilion at Toyota Music Factory, March 14th at 8:00 p.m. Unleash your creativity at the Stamp and Scrapbook Expo. Whether you're a beginner or seasoned pro, explore workshops designed to inspire and elevate your crafting skill. This all happens here at the Irving Convention Center Friday and Saturday, March 21st and 22nd.
The city of Irving has a wrong-way driver detection system, and cameras have caught some very close calls. Take a look at the car we circled and read as it turns the wrong way and narrowly avoids a collision. The cameras are located on frontage roads along state highways 183 and 161. When they detect a wrong-way driver, the system will send an alert to police. The goal is to stop violators before they get on the ramps and on the highways. These clips are just a few examples. The system has caught more than 100 wrong-way drivers so far.
And I think Irving was very lucky to be a pilot city to do this in the metroplex. Although it had been done by Tech dot and NTTA, it hadn't been done at the local level. And the key thing is it's trying to address a bad behavior as it starts.
The earlier that we're able to detect these wrong-way drivers, the more likelihood that we can go do something to either stop or alert drivers coming down the road so that they realize there's someone coming the wrong way. So they're not going to have that high-speed head-to-head collision.
Grant money from the North Central Texas Council of Governments paid for the system.
We appreciate each and every one of you taking the time out of your Sunday schedule to spend with us for just one hour to celebrate and honor Black History Month.
Irving Black Arts Council President Lenita Johnson organizes the Black History Month celebration every year.
And Zora's voice is still ringing in mine, still dancing in the jazz of my memory.
It's a program that means a great deal to the community and to her.
It honors my mom and dad. We grew up seeing black history in my home. And my parents thought it was important, not only for us, but my neighbors, because not all my neighbors was black. So they thought it was important to share that.
She shares this celebration once again at the Irving Arts Center with a moving dance. Special presentations from Irving ISD students, including a Langston Hughes poem read by Demario Jones.
I live here too. I want freedom just as you, democracy.
And performer Janet Forni shares stories and poetry of literary icons.
We're putting on a production that entails black history from the Cujo Lewis story to our guest today, which will be Mr. and Mrs. Martin, Ms. Irma P. Hall. We'll tell her story. I'll read some of her poetry.
It is their story that teaches us the power of connection, the power of hope and love.
It became important for me to let their voices to continue to be heard. And that's the whole premises for today is that the voices are still heard.
The Black History Month celebration brings the community together to learn about a significant moment in time while encouraging us to look at our own past.
If you don't know your history, you don't know yourself.
Which is why the program hopes to inspire future generations through this compelling showcase.
Every year is a new generation and a new chance and a new opportunity to sing, dance, honor, and say it all over again.
On behalf of the Irving Black Arts Council, thank each and every one of you for being here to celebrate with us. We will see you guys right back here next year. Thank you so much.
I believe this spot has the opportunity for us to really take Irving to the next level.
Looking over here and looking behind you, you're going to see massive development. You're going to see this investment pay off.
We have been waiting a long time for this. The way it's come out has just been more than expected. It's turned out beautifully.
And I even think traffic being slowed down has been a benefit to us.
Now that it's over, we're just excited to continue to redevelop downtown.
You know, we're replacing a 50-year-old facility, so it's more energy efficient. This serves West Irving primarily.
This area has grown tremendously in last 30, 40 years. It is a very vital investment.
We've now got over 80 miles of road that have been overlaid and reconditioned in the city of Irving. We're looking and paying attention to just not the road condition underground, but also the rideability of the road.
We have done the first phase, which was from Northgate to Byron Nelson Way. That is completed. We are now working on the piece between Metter and Northgate. No question, it'll be a smoother ride, absolutely safer.
So we have an existing tank on Esters just north of 183. Due to the growth that we've seen through the years, it needs to be bigger. So we'll be taking down this facility and putting a brand-new two-and-a-half million gallon storage tank in its place.
I think one of the neatest things about this project is we've worked diligently to get federal funding for this. And about 50% of this project is federally funded.
The North Texas Teen Book Festival is our annual festival featuring young adult and middle-grade authors. We usually bring about 70 to 75 authors every year. This year, we will have about 40-something panel discussions with authors. We'll have two keynote addresses, one in the morning for middle grade and one in the afternoon for young adult. We'll have book giveaways all day. And at the end of the day, authors will stay and they will sign your books for you. Four of our authors will have their signing lines ticketed, and you can get those tickets at 7:45 in the morning. So get there early if you want to have your book signed by these four authors: Arlstein, Alan Gratz, and Rachel Renee, and Nikki Russell. It is a free festival. You'll be able to see over 70 authors, and we're talking big-name authors, all for free. And it's just a wonderful day for young and old alike to enjoy literature.
We had one more thing we wanted to talk about in regard to, Mark, you wanted to, it was put on by you and Brad.
Yeah, so we, we've talked about this before, about moving forward with retaining of outside council. And I know, Kay, you've talked about that. Well, so far, we've just been dealing with zoning, and your office is able to handle that. But I feel like we could really benefit greatly by having experienced council to deal with these things, not just talking about zoning, but getting them early on. I think it's actually, it's late in the game. I wish we would have had them early on to talk about what are all the things that we can actually be, should we be concerned about, and looking at a destination resort, casino component to it, so that we can get the benefit of that experience and that consultation, and have them ready to go if and when some other emergency project is needed for drafting or whatever else it is. I think it's just very prudent for us to do that. We also want to talk about industry consultants, too. And I think that that's, Chris is on board with that, so.
Yeah, we have, if I may, mayor. Sorry, I'm sitting and speaking with my mouth full. Please do. As Philip and I were talking, we see on the industry side.
We're on.
Yeah, we're on.
We're on TV.
So as we are looking forward to, I think, some of the significant discussions we have, first on the development standards, we're going to want to bring in some outside assistance for, from individuals that have had some experience that could become on our side, similar to what we did with the hotel, finding a hotel expert that is very familiar with how that industry works, help walk council through a lot of the business components of that. I think that would be very helpful. And some of the development standards, what should that look like? Because we've never really done anything to that scale before. And I think as we get more into some of the EDIA components, especially with some particular components of that destination piece, I think we're going to want to definitely bring in some outside entities to help us walk through some of those financial analyses, make sure that we know and understand what that impact is going to be.
Brad?
Yeah, I was going to just mention again, like with this, and I completely agree, Chris. I think that's a smart idea. With this ambitious timeline and us wanting to move expeditiously, I think there could be a variety of zoning issues. I know it's not a city-owned piece of land, but I also think there's some benefit that you guys could have in being able to move or having assistance. you guys could have in being able to move or having assistance. And I think not only with a consultant, but also with, especially on something this big and important, I want to get it done correctly, and that's not a critique of anybody, but it's, I always like another set of eyes or two, and we've certainly worked with some great counsel in the past, like Bracewell on projects. Like I think they're very trustworthy and like good partners, and so I would just say, you know, go, go ahead, get somebody and then use them as you need, or let's use them as much as we need to get this together, to, to look at this language and make sure, okay, do we have all the protections then we want so we can move forward, get it put in, put in there? But then, we all know this project, if it comes to fruition and it's what everybody hopes, there's going to be a whole lot more steps along the way. And so it's exciting, but also I want you guys to have the tools that you all need. And I think even though technically we're early in the stages, let's just get extra counsel, let's get consultants in for giving us ideas early so that we're out in front of everything and we're, we're being a good partner and working with the landowners.
Kyle?
Yeah, it's, this thing is going to be really politically contentious, and if there's a way in which we can bring third party in to protect both city staff, city attorney, whoever, to provide them some coverage so they're not going to get thrown under the bus and beat up. Because I know that doesn't bother anybody, but still, this is going to be pretty contentious as we've already seen. So I agree.
I think, Chris, you and Philip worked really well on the hotel. You brought in some great consultants, some great financial advisors to work out the financial plan, you know, and you brought in everybody that worked with the legal part of it as well. So I think putting a team together like you did there, I mean, I think that was the smoothest thing we've done out of all the stuff we've done most recently. You had, had the money figured out, you had the contracts figured out, you had the construction figured out, you had the partnership put together so that we could move forward with it. So, you know, I trust you all, between the three of you, between legal and yourself, and I always separate you and Philip, but you're both the same, but working the same, but I, both of you have the ability to, to get to the bottom of those type of things. So we just wanted to make sure, and I appreciate you guys bringing it up and putting it on there to talk that we want to make sure that you have the tools and that we're ready to go.
If you go through the budget process, we'll make sure that we include those components into the budget and make some estimations what we think that would be.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, just like everybody else is saying, that we position ourselves with whatever we need legally. Because have you, did you see the Irving media headlines? Let me read it to you. New Mavs Arena, question mark. Irving City Council takes first steps in potential swoop for Dallas team, Dallas Morning News. So you can bet, you know, and it says during the Thursday work session, the Irving City Council reviewed and enthusiastically voted to initiate a resigning application that if adopted would be an overture for luring the Mavericks out of Dallas. What I'm simply saying, and I'll have to tell y'all, everybody now knows about what we're trying to do even more. And so we need to make sure that we, council members, you know, wherever you stand, look, we need to make sure that we're all on our A-game, we're all working together to get this done, all right? Because, I mean, we fixing to get shot at from everywhere, you know? So I just want to make sure I make that statement. We might as well get rid of, and we need to fight for this, whatever, for Irving as council members.
So I think we're, we're all in alignment. We got staff, we got people headed the right direction. So anything else we need to, on the agenda we didn't get to, K O? I think we got everything. Chris, everything? Okay, at 6:20, we'll stand adjourned.